It's set for one person.
Over here, boys.
Not for a family house.
No, first wrong question, gentlemen.
Not for a family of four.
How you doing? Congratulations. Here we go. I will. Are you sure?
I don't think you should tap into your system all day.
All right.
In your wintertime, you said you should not go into higher tier.
All right, here we go.
We never had a tier before.
That doesn't mean you shouldn't have a tier, just because you did do something that's like you can't.
Is it, are you guys inside the city limits?
You're charging a higher rate.
Are you guys inside the city limits? Okay, well, well water does that, is that what I'm, what I'm seeing here, the height, the well water? Yeah.
Whether or not that that bar is set higher than what it is.
Either that or whatever you're feeding them, I'm not. Oh, here we go, we're gonna get, go ahead and get started.
What you set it at?
All right, good evening, everybody. Oh, I can't, I'm unable to record this, so maybe you might have to record. It's not letting you do it either. All right, well, we're not going to, uh, we, I guess we won't be recording the go-to this evening. Oh, there he is, did you do that a listen?
I've heard it.
Oh.
I can take credit for it.
Okay.
It's magic.
All right, good evening, everybody, it's seven oh one, it is Monday, December fifth, twenty twenty-two, this is a regular meeting for the City Council of Woodland. If I can, if you could please make sure that your phones are silenced and rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna try not to butcher this, so if not, then I'm just gonna go to your first names, Ms. Brintano, did I get it right? All right, you take the roll, please, Ms. Brintano.
Councilmember Burke?
Here.
She's gone.
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
President?
Councilmember Doughty?
Here.
Councilmember Boyce, um, excuse me.
Yeah, you got upgraded. I think you're, roll, did you get Roland on there?
We have an extra seat for you.
Roland, you get seven.
Councilmember Roland is the other one you missed.
Okay, but she's not, no. Uh, Councilmember Roland and Councilmember Rounds have both called out ill this evening. I, I know that there's a consideration to deviate from council rule one point eight to allow Ms. Roland to attend this meeting remotely, but she has since called out sick.
Need to table that, is that what we're?
Yes, please.
So, motion to table suspension of council rules?
No, we gotta vote on excusing.
Yeah, but she's called out sick, she's not.
Unless she called out sick, which she did.
The, the, the.
That's just a consideration.
What was on the floor is to consider allowing her to do remote. She's called out sick now, so we don't have to consider that because she's out sick, but we do have to vote for excusing Roland and Rounds, but this motion is to table.
We'll gotta get an agenda for us to do that, or no?
Nope.
Well, there's no, it's not a motion.
We can just pull it off then.
Yeah, it's just a.
Then we'll just pull it, motion to pull it.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The consideration from deviation from council rule one point eight has been pulled. Moving on to Ms. Rounds and Ms. Roland's.
Absence.
Approval for absence.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Holland, seconded by Councilmember Chapman. Ms. Brintano, please take the roll.
Councilmember Burke?
No. Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Roland, oh, excuse me, Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
And Councilmember Chapman.
Councilmember Smith.
And Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Both Councilmember Holland and, I'm sorry, Councilmember Rounds and Councilmember Roland have been excused this evening. Next up, I've got a small presentation this evening, I have two gentlemen in the back here, um, who have made it to Eagle Scout, which is a big deal.
Yes.
So, first up, I'd like to call up Tiger Stewart. Come on up. Uh, congratulations. And, yeah, you can just stand right here for me, that would be great. Um, so, Mr. Stewart here, this project was rebuilding a historic outbuilding at the Stranger House in Vancouver. And I did some research on the Stranger House, because I, I didn't realize what that was, and I thought that it was a stranger's house, but it's an actual location, it's, uh, believed to be the oldest or the second oldest building in Clark County. Uh, so, Mr. Stewart here has spent almost a hundred and forty hours on the project, all during COVID restrictions, so he only had the help of a new fam, of his family reimbursed to help him out with this, and what exactly did you do?
Uh, so, we demolition, or we did a demo on the actual house, and then we, um, rebuilt it from the ground up and, uh, painted it, and we sent the ship, the, uh, partnership of, um, basically, I guess we reworked it.
Okay, okay, that, back to, uh, historical standards, I'm assuming, okay. That is, that's pretty awesome, and I, I saw that it's not open for public, is this, the goal, is to rebuild this and get it to?
I don't think we're gonna have it serviceable, I think it'll just be, um, just to see it, probably use it.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay, gotcha, and just so everyone knows, it's, it's from eighteen hundred and thirty-eight?
Wow.
I'm pulling this out of somewhere, and I don't know where I'm getting it. Uh, I did, I did one reading, and that was that, it was very interesting. A gentleman worked for the Hudson's Bay Company and was a, what'd he do? Oh, I'm putting you on the spot, I don't remember, I don't remember, I just know the Hudson's Bay Company was involved, but congratulations, it's a big deal, I, we expect big things from you as you move into, uh, adulthood and off to further schooling and into your, into your life, so, uh, being an Eagle Scout is not easy to come by, so, well done, that was a lot of time spent on that. So, a certificate of recognition is hereby awarded to Tiger Stewart for outstanding achievement and exceptional leadership ability, as evidenced by his attainment of Eagle Scout, given this fifth day of December twenty twenty-two, congratulations. Yeah, go, yeah. Right. And next up, we have Riker Stewart. You wanna join me up here? Congratulations. It's a, it's a, it's a big deal, it's a big deal. Um, and I, and I should, and I should state too that you received yours on May seventh of this year, and last year. Oh, wow, okay, oh, yes, of last year, you've got yours this year, in July, okay. Uh, so, Rikers Eagle Project was building a life jacket loner board at the, with the Port of Woodland at Austin Point, on the Columbia River in Woodland, Washington here. Uh, he spent almost a hundred hours on that project, if I remember right, it was in a dedication to a gentleman who drowned, um, out on the, uh, one of our, our local residents that was well-loved here, so, uh, those are very important boards, that we have them down in Porshu Lake, so thank you for doing that, um, that's amazing, do you have anything you'd like to tell us about your project?
I learned something about trusses.
Okay.
Pretty hard to build.
You going into engineering now? Are you?
Yeah.
Oh, wow, good for you, that's fantastic, that is awesome. Uh, certificate of recognition is hereby awarded to Riker Stewart for outstanding achievement and exceptional leadership ability, as evidenced by his attainment of Eagle Scout, given this fifth day of December twenty twenty-two, congratulations. All right, now, Miss Boyce. Good job, good job. Not, not an easy feat to come by, by any means, you should be very proud of yourselves, and we, we sure are. All right, moving on to citizen communications for items not on the agenda. Uh, first up, we have Ryan McShannon. Well, and I do, before you get started here, um, I do have a number of people that are signing up this evening, so, just to cover the rules real quick, if we could please keep it professional, uh, all comments will be directed towards me and not towards council, I'll do my best in an attempt to answer any questions that are, that are asked this evening, and you will have five minutes. You do not have to give your name or address, you could call yourself Mickey Mouse if you'd like, we don't require it, or you can let us know who you really are, so, with that, with that, I'm. Mr. McShannon, I'll give you five minutes.
Ryan McShannon, Aliven and Color, so.
All right.
A woodland resident, um, here to speak about the Cardi Hill Mine that we have, we're, we're a woodland resident, uh, we've been here for ten years, and we got notification last Friday that they're, uh, they're looking to do an overlay on the, on the property that abuts our property, um, so, more than anything, trying to get the information out to the community, this is impactful to us as woodland residents, but, uh, the noise and the other effects of having a mine this close to the city of Woodland is, is, uh, I think would be pretty important to the other folks around the surrounding area. Uh, they're, they're only required to notify, uh, residents within five hundred feet of the property, and so, uh, being in a rural area, um, but still close to town, five hundred feet doesn't touch, uh, too many folks, and so, uh, we're here tonight, uh, I'm the HOA president for our neighborhood, uh, reaching out and looking for, um, some feedback from the city of Woodland, uh, with the upcoming council meeting, uh, public hearing with the, uh, Clark County, um, planning commission, that's on December fifteenth, and we're looking and asking for your help to, um, give a perspective in, in regards to this. Um, I can go on and on about the, the ill effects that, that it could have to the community, I think most importantly for us is the, the audible noise, uh, as many of the council members in there and the planning commission pointed out that this noise would be audible up to two miles away on a regular basis, it's not just the blasting, but it's the operation of the rock quarry, as well as the dust and the other ill effects it would have on the, the traffic, especially coming over the CC Street Bridge, um, close to Chevron there, so, um, there's been numbers thrown around of how many trucks that would be per day, uh, when this was done back in ninety-six, this was sought after many years ago. Uh, Dave Peterson and others from our neighborhood fought against that with Fish First and Gary Loomis, uh, and it was, it was, uh, I think tabled at that time, um, so this is, you know, uh, it's already, it's already lost one time, we're looking to get as much support against this again. Uh, we've reached out to several organizations, and I know that we're, we're kinda in a struggle with the Cowlets, uh, Clark, I, I think, uh, being right there on the county line, um, but again, uh, asking for your support and opposition to this.
Thank you, Ms. McShannon, I will, I will tell you that, uh, we were made aware of this, we have a very knowledgeable community development director over here, and Mr. Goddard, uh, who keeps his eye on, on things that are happening around us, not only with Cowlets County, but also Clark County. Uh, so this was brought to our attention last week, when the notice went out that this was a potential project, and we have, Travis, how long was that letter? Is it six pages?
Ten.
Ten pages, we've got a ten-page letter, has it already been sent?
I got one.
Oh, it's been drafted. Okay, so we, we are not in favor of, uh, uh, yeah, uh, we, we are not in favor of, of this project going forward, I should say, I shouldn't say we, I don't speak for the council, I speak for my office. Uh, my office not in favor of this project and putting another, I think it's, is it ninety-eight, Mr. Goddard, trucks?
Sorry?
Ninety-eight trucks on the road?
Uh, I believe it was eighty-six.
Eighty-six, eight, almost a hundred, we'll just go to a hundred, a hundred trucks on the road.
The forecast in ninety-six was almost four hundred trucks a day, and so, the numbers, I would tell, I would, I would tell you to read through everything, as I'm sure you have, there's also a couple, and we're talking about history and things here in Clark County, there's a cemetery right at the base of our hill, that's a Pioneer Territorial Cemetery, that I believe is on the National Registry, and so, again, we talk about our, our region and the importance of both the river, everything else going through here in the history, there's many fashions to this, and I could speak for, you know, the next two hours, but, um, I know that there's, they're looking for gravel pits in the area and understand the need, I just think that, uh, you know, the proximity to town and the future growth of Woodland, this would not be something to do on our backyard, so, thank you for, for your position on.
Uh, we know that you, you're looking, we're going through the process, we, we're approaching the plan, we'll be approaching the planning commission with our, with our information and our concerns, um, but as we work through this process, we will slowly bring council in on that, um, for potential further action. All right, thank you so much, appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Nick?
Alec? Yeah, there's, uh, Ryan covered it, neighbor, same insurance, really don't have anything additional.
Okay, thanks, sir. And, uh, Ms. Whitney Rab? And I'm gonna hold off just one second for you before you get started, I'm, are you muted? Because I'll, I will mute mine, because they, we're having some technical issues here. You're muted?
Yeah.
Martin, can you hear me? Why don't you go ahead and unmute yours, Pete, and ask him if he can hear you over there, it didn't let me be a presenter, so, it might have taken that ability away from me.
So, Martin, can you hear me?
I got nothing.
I see why you waited.
Ms. King, can you hear me? Now I've got a message here as well, let's see, can't hear you. I've got somebody that wanted to comment here, but there's, she can't hear anything. I know. I tried to, uh, tried to spread you all out, because I don't trust you. Hey, sorry, um, could you hear Pete when he was talking? Okay, and they, they can't hear it on the YouTube either. Oh, okay.
Mark, Mark just emailed me and said he can see the video, and he dialed the YouTube, it's spoken for audio, but.
Okay.
He said it's a standby, but he doesn't hear anything.
Okay, we'll, we'll work on that, do you want to, um, call in with your phone to provide comment, or I can put you on speaker? Okay, sounds good. Oh.
Oh, now we got it.
There we go, that's on?
Yeah.
There we go. Okay, that'll fix the YouTube, let me pull this a little bit closer here, I'm not sure what's going on with the go-to.
No?
Roland, um, let me make sure that they.
He just said there's no audio under either.
No.
Mark, just send no audio on the caller now and no audio on the screen.
Um, I found it, wait, that's, okay. I apologize. Well, we were, we were looking at Zoom, but we had, just haven't made the switch yet.
Yeah.
Seeing her. All right, let's go ahead and, and let's.
What happens when we dial in?
What's that?
I mean, what happens when we dial in?
I don't know. Go ahead and cancel out there, Pete, and we'll restart it. Sorry, Ms. Rab.
That's okay. You can sit down. That's fine, I'm sure it's gonna be a one, a minute or two, one.
Or three.
Maybe we should take it, what time is it? Let's, let's go ahead and take a, um, a six-minute break, and give us six minutes here, it's seven nineteen, we'll.
First is, why is the newest bill for only twenty-one days for a thirty-day cycle, and it's listed on the city website for at least two months, that is supposed to be due December fifteenth, but it's on everybody's bills as due December ninth?
Did you just say that it showed twenty-one days of billing instead of thirty?
Well, our last bill was due November eighteenth.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay, sorry.
So. I mean, the citizens, with meetings being held at all different days and times, it also created a system of advising and voting with very little conversation, even at the council meetings, and many times, when I have attended council meetings, the committee meetings actually hadn't happened for a variety of reasons. So perhaps a citizen advisory board can be created to answer some of these questions and create accountability between the city, the council, and the committee, and the community, and if government wanted to help the citizens, they would get rid of the spend-your-budget unofficial rule and allow savings for bigger purchases and projects, and still be able to ask for an increase in the next budget.
You gave me a lot there, so I will go through some of it, um, thank you. Um, FCS is online this evening, as stated during other meetings, we are having a workshop this evening to go over the capital projects and what the money is being used for, um, we need a time to get that together, which Ms. Coleman will be presenting this evening. The ARPA money, I'm not sure about the question for the ARPA money, that one went into the, uh, a small portion was set aside for an HVAC system at City Hall, and another hundred thousand was set aside for, uh, utility bills for citizens within the community that they could apply for, that were struggling, and then the rest of it was put into the water and sewer, unless I missed something on that list, because I know I'll get called out for that for lying, um, was it just the three items that we did?
I believe so, I'd have to go back and.
So the rest has been put into the water and sewer fund?
Actually, it's water, so it's.
Just water?
It still resides in the general fund, you see, in the budgets, and transfers out to the water fund, uh, for some of its profits, and then maybe some of the capital funds that are.
And part of that money right now is being put into Lake Shore, and you can see that all the constructions going over there with the water pipe that's being put in, so some of that was through ARPA funding, and then, I, I keep, I'm looking at Ms. Coleman here, the other ARPA is for West Scott?
It was all advertised in the paper, in the reflector paper, and it was also in my last capital project, where all the ARPA money went.
Okay, gotcha, um, so I'm not sure that the, um, statement about the ARPA funds, where'd it go, and, or is it going somewhere else, it's, it's been allocated, um.
I guess what I was saying was, it didn't show, it wasn't showing up in the budget, how it went in and came back out of the water and sewer fund.
Okay. Okay, gotcha, um, the committee meetings, I, I haven't done anything, this is the only way that I know, since I've been here, the committee meetings have always happened before the meeting, uh, and then, so if, if it was done differently in the past, and I've been here seven years now, um, I only know it this way, so that's something absolutely that we can look back at. Um, as far as the cameras for council and having them on, and a citizens advisory board, that's, those are questions for council to discuss during a workshop or to bring forward. And I know I didn't answer all of them, but we will be covering some of those when Ms. Coleman presents this evening. Anyone else for items not on the agenda? Or was, oh, I guess I was going on the agenda, sorry, I started with the items on the agenda. Anyone else that failed to sign up at the beginning of the meeting? Anyone online for items on the agenda? Seeing none, moving on to items not on the agenda, Mr. Belile.
I am Keith Belile, uh, president of, uh, Planner's Days, Woodland Planner's Days Planning Committee, and I'm here to remind everybody that Woodland Planner's Days two thousand twenty-three is June fifteenth through the eighteenth this year, and we have already have the applications for the vendors for the Saturday, Sunday market available on the website at planners-days dot com. We also have the forums available for people that are interested in sponsorships or donating prizes, and I have those with me as well tonight, if anybody's interested in those, our meetings are the third, uh, Tuesday of each month, our next meeting will be, uh, the twentieth of this month at the VFW Hall at six P M. And the public is invited to join, we're glad to have your, uh, help in planning and producing this event every year.
And we appreciate your partnership with the lodging tax dollars this year.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
And thank you very much for your help with the tree lighting the other night, it was fabulous.
Good. Um, when do the applications come out for the ladies, for the high school?
That'll be this month.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Yes, that's happening, like, probably getting ready to happen within the next week.
Gotcha, perfect, all right, those at home listening, encourage your, your daughters to apply for the scholarship program.
Yes, we want lots of, um, applicants for the princess to, uh, to try to compete to be the Ms. Woodland and, uh, win scholarships and help celebrate the community.
It's a good time, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Ms. Belile. Uh, Ms. Rab, items not on the agenda? You're good, oh, okay, gotcha, all right. Uh, Robin Gibson. Did I get that right? I took my glasses off, why'd I get my glasses, there we go. Good evening.
My father wanted a girl, what can I say?
Nah, all right, you have five minutes, sir?
Yeah, my, uh, issue here is the water bills, uh, I haven't been paying a hundred percent attention, but, uh, when, uh, when the change started coming, you know, it was my understanding that we would get two forty-five day bills, and then we'd go to one, one a month. My average bill, uh, is about two twenty in the bimonthly system. Uh, my first forty-five day bill came before forty-five days, and it was a hundred and seventy-five dollars. My second one came twenty-five days after that, for another hundred and seventy-five dollars. So now I'm paying three fifty in less than two months' time. And then, I just got another bill, twenty days after that one, for a hundred and ten, if I'm, if I remember right.
And that would be your, that would be your thirty day?
Yeah, but it came in twenty days. And, uh, so, I'm looking at four hundred and sixty dollars for two and a half months. You know, and then, I started asking questions, uh, online with the, uh, the woodland page on Facebook, and someone told me that, uh, they did a study before they elected to move to this new system, uh, that found that it was going to cost them seventy-two thousand dollars a year more to do that system, so, I'm wondering, where is the wisdom in that? And I'm wondering who's getting the kickback? Because, you know, there's a lot of money going out, and it's not really being accounted for, and then, my neighbor, when I told them that I was going to be coming down here tonight, she said, well, did you notice that your garbage bill hasn't changed? With each bill? And that's the case, so, now, in these last three bills, I've paid six months' worth of garbage. That doesn't make sense. Uh, I don't know who the company is, i- is it FCS, is that it?
No, no, they're, they're the ones that did the utility rate study for us, they're on here to, um, answer any questions this evening, as Ms. Coleman gives the presentation on the water and sewer.
Okay.
Um, plan.
Whoever this company is that, uh, is doing this, uh, they're not saving anybody any money, except maybe to put more money in their CEO's bank account. Uh, I don't know, I, I personally, I feel that there should be a, a vote with all the residents in the city, or all the homeowners or whatever, as to whether or not they want to stay with this outfit, because I don't. Uh, I smell a rat. And I, hopefully, it's not here in this building, but, you know, uh, I don't know, because, like I said, I haven't, uh, been all that keen on local politics. But, it just doesn't smell right, you know, it's not passing the smell test. Can we do anything about this?
Uh, there, I, I would encourage you to stick around for the, um, presentation from Ms. Coleman this evening. So I know you're talking strictly about billing, the bills were outsourced at the direction of council, um, and I, I will also make some statements during my report this evening as well, before, before the presentation.
Uh, was there any truth to the, uh, thought that it was seventy-two thousand dollars?
I don't have that number in front of me.
More expensive to go to that system?
I would have, Ms. Coleman? Are you familiar with that statement? I would have, Ms. Coleman, are you familiar with that statement?
No, I, I, it was my understanding that they did a study before they decided to go this route.
Oh, I know where you're going with this, sir. So.
Going this route would cost seventy-two thousand dollars more annually than it would to not go that way.
Well, I, I think that, that there was two options that were, well, there was three options really that were put onto the table to council, which was keep billing in-house and keep it bimonthly, so every sixty days with no change in, in that, no increase except for annual increases for employees and benefits and those types of things.
Yeah.
To outsource to a, a monthly bill, which would have cost money, which I don't know that figure, or to keep it in-house monthly, which would have cost money as well because we would have to hire another employee with benefits and everything else. So there, there was still a cost to keep it in-house monthly as well. So I, I understand what you're saying. You were kind of.
I would move for keeping it in-house monthly. I mean, that, that's fine if it goes to monthly, but as long as it's in-house because then I know it's all right here.
I understand that, but back to the, the question about the cost.
Yeah.
Yes, there is a cost increase to go monthly through Minole, but there's also a cost increase to go monthly and keep it in-house as well.
Yeah.
So it, it, it's not a wash. There, there's still going to be a cost increase. I don't know what the difference is though.
Yeah, but I, yeah, I, I would be more in favor of that, but that's me.
Understand.
Okay.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. I think when the discussions got, were had about going to Minole, to go to monthly billing with Minole, it was cheaper to go with Minole for monthly billing than it was to stay with the city at monthly billing. So that's why they went with Minole. The council voted to go with Minole at that point versus staying with city billing. So if we had stayed bimonthly billing, then Minole would.
Was there an issue with the bimonthly billing?
For staying with bimonthly billing? The biggest concern, I think, at that time was whenever there's a leak, it's two months before people realize there's a leak. People can budget. People can budget better. So there was a lot of discussion about that, trying to make it more simplistic for people at that point. That's why the council ended up going with monthly billing.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, but I'm.
I, I was not, I was not personally pro-Minole.
No, no, what I was getting at though was, you know, this is hard to budget for. You know, a hundred and seventy-five dollars twice in less than a month and then three weeks after that, another hundred and ten dollars.
I think we can all admit it has not gone smoothly. I think it, it seems to be leveling out now. My last bill was more on par with.
Your last bill was only three weeks after your previous bill?
I didn't look at the data when it comes in. I just look at what the dollar amount compared to what my two months' bill were and it's, it's starting to get on average.
Yeah, well, it, it, if, if my next bill waits a month to get here and it's only a hundred and ten dollars, then yeah, because that's about what I was paying before. It was a hundred and ten a month. But I have, I have a spidey sense going on that that's not going to be the case. We'll see. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the gallery for items not on the agenda who failed to sign up at the beginning of the, yes, Ms. Rab?
I just wanted to make a comment on the discussion that was just going on because from my understanding, it was cheaper to go with Minole because that Minole was planning on using our computer system to integrate the two, the two systems because it's also from my understanding that, that our system that gets the data for water and sewer does not transfer directly over to Minole. Minole was hoping that our, our provider would give them that data. And so everything is basically going into spreadsheets and getting sent down to Minole to then be taken out of the spreadsheets back into their system, which is what I'm wondering if part of the problem is. It's either computer or hand transferring data and misputting in numbers. And that's why there's so many people who have weird bills. Because there's people, in case you guys haven't looked at social media, that have sewer bills where the usage is higher than their water usage. And we're not in the summer where it would be the winter averaging. So if we're billing based on what the water usage is, except for in the summer, then you shouldn't be able to have a higher sewer usage than your water usage. But if the numbers aren't directly transferable, then that leaves a lot of room for error as a computer system transfers it over or a person transfers it over. And if, and if we're having to input all that data into spreadsheets to then go out there, how much money are we then paying to have someone put in all that data? And then the only people basically are there to check it is the person getting the bill. So I know I haven't had a correct bill yet so far out of four for myself personally. But, and I know a lot of other people who haven't. So I, I guess we need to know what the problems are. And if no one figures out what the problems are, then it's never going to get fixed. So.
Thank you. Anyone else in the gallery for items not on the agenda? Anyone online for items not on the agenda? Seeing none, moving on to the agenda itself this evening.
Moved to approve the agenda?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Chapman, seconded by Councilmember Smith. Ms. Brintano, please take the roll.
Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
The agenda has been approved. Time is now seven fifty-five. We're moving into a public hearing on ordinance number one five two nine and ordinance rescinding ordinance number one five zero eight and ordinance number one five two three. First reading. And I'm sure I've got the right paper here. And for the public hearing, we have Ms. Rab. Nope, okay. Anyone else in the gallery for the hub, the public hearing on ordinance number one five two nine, one five two three? Seeing none. Anyone online for the public hearing for ordinance one five two nine and one five two three?
Mayor Ben?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
This is regarding the budget and rescinding the previous ordinances?
Uh, just the rescension at this point.
Okay, I would like to submit a comment.
Uh, go ahead.
Jennifer Raykeen, Port of Woodland Executive Director. My comment is as I want to express the gratitude to the city council for considering this, these ordinances to take on the planning for the Woodland Bottoms. My concern, obviously, with the years that have gone by, with the lack of planning is to ensure that we can still move forward with some kind of master plan for the Woodland Bottoms because of the direct impact that it has on the city council or the city of Woodland residents and the infrastructure and transportation. This is obviously a huge importance to the port as we look to grow towards Austin Point as well as we see the impact to residents out there and potentially additional housing developments. For example, the Ahho development of the Donald and Ferguson families selling, wanting to sell their family farms. Those types of things create a direct impact, a negative impact to our communities. So I hope that even though you are rescinding this action or, or taking comments regarding this, that, that the city council, as well as the county commissioners, will be able to work towards a plan. The Port of Woodling Commission has put, set aside some financial dollars for a master plan of the Woodland Bottoms that we had planned and discussed with the city council. But as well as, my concern is that I did not see anything in the budget regarding a master plan. So that would be wanting to make sure that it's still a priority to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Raykeen. I'm looking at Mr. Randolph right now because I don't want to say anything too much. So as it comes to the budget and the two thousand twenty-three plan, that is somewhat on hold at this point. Yes, we did discuss everything that you, everything you just said was accurate up until about a month ago, I would say. And we are now having discussions with the county. Anyone else online for items or for the public hearing? Seeing none. The time is now seven fifty-nine. We are into another public hearing for ordinance number one five two eight adopting the budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. Signed in, we have Ms. Rab. Anyone in the gallery for two thousand twenty-three fiscal year budget? Seeing none. Anyone online? Ordinance number one five two eight adopting the budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. Seeing none. The time is now eight o'clock. We are out of public hearing. Moving on to reports of city council.
I don't know. I could say that.
Mrs. Holland?
So the tree lighting was Saturday and I ran into Councilmember Smith. That was about the only person I could see in the dark up there. But I mean, it was, I like, yeah, the lights were already on when we went. It was a great, I thought the new tree was amazing. I kind of miss that Dennis and them would have to go hack down a perfectly live tree for that, but I, I dug the, the new tree and I thought all of the activities and everything that was going on down there, that was with collaboration with what? The Moose Lodge and the city and Mr. Belial, I think, Santa.
Downtown Woodland revitalization was involved with that?
Yes, yes. I didn't get to go over there because there was like a mega line. But anyway, I thought it was great. It was cool. I've never been to one. So that was my first and I thought it was pretty cool. So.
All right, seeing nothing else, moving on to Public Safety Committee.
Who's our?
Oh, okay. Okay, uh, next meeting's on the second at five thirty. Okay, the third. Oh, is that the, oh, the third. It's going to be. That's a holiday. So it's the third, for those of you that are keeping track on the agenda. Public Works did not meet tonight either, correct? It'll be on the third as well. Okay.
Says the second on here. Is it the third or the second?
The, Monday's a holiday.
Yeah. Okay.
Reports of Advisory Committee, Calhoun County Council of Governments. We only had an executive meeting last month and we will only be having an executive meeting this month as well, just to approve payables. So nothing to report there.
Could you mention that shindig they had?
Oh, I will. Yeah, I'll put that under my, yes. Mr. Goddard could probably speak to that.
Okay.
But yes, I'll put that on my list here because I've got a small list running tonight. Downtown Woodland revitalization. Ms. Coleman, do you have anything?
Um, just wanted to say that they advertised for the Woodland Fest this year. They also offered a sponsorship with the Moose Lodge and the City of Woodland and advice to the Woodland Fest. We have our website that's up and lighting going, so we have fully putting some additional items on there. And we're basically just saving this capital project with the, the city.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to reports of officers. So I'll go first this evening. I do have a list here. We've been busy. Uh, let's see. Already talked about the cog. Had mayor exchange last Monday in this room. We hosted, it was a virtual exchange with the Association of Washington Cities. I invited Clark and Calhoun County mayors into this room and we had clerk from City Hall over to pop up everybody else. There was about thirty-five cities in attendance. It was a great meeting, talked about all kinds of things and utility bills were a top of conversation across the state, so not just here in Woodland. I was starting to think that we were, we were on an island by ourselves, but it is, it is a challenge right now. A pretty big challenge, especially when it comes to the rising costs in, in the economy right now. Richfield down the street from us had a project scheduled on Pioneer that came back with a bid of sixteen million dollars when they started going through the process and they are now at thirty-four million dollars about fourteen months later or so. So it, it's a challenge for, for everyone right now and that was for culvert and road expansion. So continue those conversations. The chief and I were auctioneers at the chamber dinner on Saturday and my understanding is, is that we blew away last year's record when we did it. Auctioned off quite a, quite a number of items and there wasn't a lot of people there. I think they were, they were scared of the weather. So it's nice to know that that we were able to get into a very small group of people's pockets and have them pay a lot of money to help out the visitor center. So that's good. We must have shamed them into it. Sworn a new officer today. Officer Seth Thompson will begin his FTO. I don't want to steal your thunder, but we did that this morning. So he'll be starting his FTO on Thursday, which is very exciting. Currently working on legislative priorities as we get ready for City Action Days up in Olympia in February. So you'll get some information on that for those of you that want to attend. It will be in person this year. And the cog had a meeting and Mr. Goddard, maybe you can speak to this. They use, they're doing a economic development tour throughout the county. For those, our county and Waukaiakum County. So it's a council of governments for, it's, I always get this wrong. Somebody help me out with the cog. Waukaiakum Council of Governments. There we go. So the two counties, they do an economic tour throughout the county and Woodland was a stop. We didn't know too much about it until the day that it was happening. So even though they reserved our room. So Mr. Goddard, if you could speak to that a little bit?
So I encourage anybody who's interested in hearing about their efforts to reach out and contact the council of government staff, but they are currently seeking input on what are the priorities, what are the desires? And what kind of economic development input the communities would like to give into this planning? So they have a lot of different kind of irons and different fires and they're looking for some community input into economic development considerations for the next few years.
Thank you. And it, it should be noted that this is a different organization, not the city driving this plan. This is an overall county plan. We do play into it. We are members of the cog, but we also have our own plans here in town for, for growth. I know that we've got some heat for that meeting stating that we shouldn't be doing anything because we have a traffic problem, but this wasn't really our, our meeting. I'm not trying to pass the buck, but this is a complete separate organization that does a thirty, we'll go with a thirty thousand foot view of the county and how to get jobs and the economy stimulated here within both counties. Did you want to say something? Oh, okay. You undid your microphone. I thought maybe you wanted to jump in. The other thing I want to address this evening is Minole and the water bills as well, the utility bills. I shouldn't call them water bills because they are utility bills. There's multiple charges that are on that, on those bills. Had a very interesting meeting this week and I'm looking forward to a conversation with council during our workshop this evening. We haven't been sitting on our hands. We have weekly meetings with Minole going over the, the challenges and issues. We have had a number of challenges with this switch over. I will agree with the community on that and I understand that, that it has been very frustrating. It's been very frustrating for us as well. However, I think this week it was an aha moment of, and Ms. Rab just made some comments about hand billing and data being entered and that's how we used to do billing. And that leaves a lot of room for errors. Good, bad, or indifferent. But by switching to Minole, I think what has occurred as we take a step back and look at the outsourcing, that we had a lot of challenges internal and we didn't note a lot of things that we didn't realize were happening either. We've had folks that haven't been paying garbage for a certain amount of time. We have people that haven't received a bill in a certain amount of time. We're not passing blame or, or the buck or anything else, but a lot of what we did internally by hand left in August when an employee departed. And we're, it's unknown why we were billing the way we were billing some of these accounts. I, I believe that Minole is doing the right thing with the billing and the process that's been set forward. And what that has done is brought forward a lot of errors and things that we were doing internally that maybe were not best practices. So as we work through that, I'm not making excuses. I'm not trying to make excuses. I just think that we're, we're to the point now that hopefully it is leveling out. that maybe were not best practices. So, as we work through that, I'm not making excuses, I'm not trying to make excuses, I just think that we're, we're to the point now that hopefully it is leveling out. But we are actively working with a number of accounts and folks that have been calling in. We have a one-stop shop now over in Public Works to one person who is handling all of those complaints and all those phone calls that are coming in and doing the research. A lot of folks have called in with some very extremely high bills. And as we dive into them, it's, they're looking at, at one utility bill that covers five months and believing that is the first bill for, for one month. So there's some education that is also going on with, with some customers too. But with that, I do, I do believe that we are, we are finding better practices by having somebody else doing our outsourcing, at this moment. Whether we continue to do that, I don't know. That's up to council to decide, but at this point, a lot of, a lot of things have occurred that would suggest that our, our previous method of, of billing was not the best. So, with that, Mr. Boyce.
Okay, I know we have a lot to cover tonight.
So, I'm just, I just wanted to mention that ordinance fifteen twenty-eight listed on the agenda regarding the budget, that is, wasn't listed on the budget, but it's a first reading. The second reading will happen at the next meeting. And as stated in the staff note, council members have the ability to change the budget up until December thirty-first, but prior to final vote, so. So I'll leave it at that. I know we have a lot to cover tonight.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Boyce. Ms. Randolph? Sanderson's not here. Anything from the clerk's office? I know you're with the plating, but I'm looking to you because you're in that seat tonight. Alright, Chief Kelly?
So the only, the only other thing to add to your comments, Ms. Mayor, is Sergeant Keller and I will be going up to Indian to go and visit our student officer who's in the process of completing the academy. He's finishing up his first month.
Alright. When can we expect him in a car for field training?
It'll be a minute or so.
A minute or so, okay. Couple more months is what that means.
He's got, he's got a little bit more training to go. Like, I think March, March-ish?
Oh, okay, so we have a number of months. Alright, alright, thank you. Mr. Goddard?
So, community development, in addition to having these surprises that come up like the Cardi Mountain Mine, the stuff that we're working on is the new permitting system. We expect to have a kickoff sys, kickoff meeting on that, hopefully before the end of this week. We are also talking about starting inter-local agreement discussions with the county. This is in relationship to the ordinance that's before you and the five objectives that we're trying to achieve with our planning efforts. We are worried about a, I, I should say I, not we, I am worried about a compressed timeline for the comprehensive plan update because that is going to be due June twenty, June of two thousand and twenty-five, which really means we need to start engaging on that January two thousand and twenty-four. And which really gives us two thousand and twenty-three to do a master plan of the bottoms. Otherwise, we won't be able to have the bottoms plan done before that, so hopefully the county is going to be interested in, in an expedited program to help us to have that bottoms discussion. We are also working with Calhoun County for the flood hazard mitigation plan update, so they are taking the lead on this and they're looking at countywide flood mitigation plan update. And also the community resiliency pilot program, we've been looking at some additional programs from the Department of Idaho, or sorry, the University of Washington and I believe the University of Idaho have been developing some tools for this. So we've, we've been taking that for a test bin and we're working with Department of Commerce to help understand how this is going to affect new communities or communities going forward. So, that's been progressing and hopefully within, by the end of this month, we should have a couple more meetings with them and make some progress on that. So, that's just a quick update for the department.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Goddard. And Ms. Coleman, do you have anything in addition to your presentation this evening?
Yes, basically I just want to publicly thank the Woodland Jazz Band for coming to our Christmas related ceremony and playing music. I want to thank the choir from Woodland High School for coming and singing Christmas carols. Also want to thank the Moose Lodge for being there and, and setting up the Winter Fest and partnering with DWR and the City of Woodland and for all of our crew that went through and decorated all of downtown with the banners and the drinking over the roadway and putting up the brand new Christmas tree and making sure the flower pots are watered even though it's winter. I mean, I think the crew's done a really good job and just everybody working together to make that happen for the community. I just wanted to say thank you to the school, to the Moose Lodge, to DWR and to our, our employees and the city for that happening.
Thank you. And there was one thing that I did forget to say, that I, I was there as well. And downtown looked absolutely amazing, looked better than it has any year that we've been here. The nativity's up and I don't, it looks like they've refreshed that somehow as well. I'm not sure, but it just looks fresh and, and new and, and fun down there, so thank you.
There is an amazing picture from the night it was snowing, looking straight downtown on Facebook.
That was from, yeah.
Beautiful.
Yeah.
Of downtown, all decorated in the snow. It's really a beautiful picture.
Done a wonderful job. Thank you. Thank you for that. Not only to DWR, but also for, for the guys as well. Yeah, it's awesome. Moving on to consent items.
Moved to approve the consent items.
Second.
Moved by council member Chapman, seconded by council member Smith. Ms. Brenton?
Council member Chapman?
Aye.
Council member Smith?
Aye.
Council member Holland?
Aye.
Council member Doughty?
Aye.
Council member Burke?
Aye.
Consent items have passed. The time is eight fifteen. Does council need a break before moving into workshop? Yes, okay. Why don't we go ahead and take five minutes, okay? Take a quick five-minute break. It's eight fifteen, we'll reconvene.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Did you get a chance to read that? Anything to add? Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I will take a look at that now. My, my guess is that they're going to argue that that's not relevant for that site because the reason why they're mining it is because it's bedrock, not because it has soils that would slide. So I will look at that and see whether I can add anything to the letter, but my guess is the county won't consider that because of specifically the rock they're going after. If it was anything other than a bedrock mine,
Yeah, yeah.
that would be relevant. A surface mine, which basically just means it's an open pit, as opposed to a tunnel mine.
Is it, so is the raffle for like, you buy the raffle ticket and then drop?
Like, we're ever going to get any of those?
So each dream has a business name, so like, what's it did to?
Well.
So they have P and B and then when you go into the register, I buy your ticket.
And, and part of,
So you buy tickets for what?
Part of what I'm going to do tonight is I'm going to point out that really we should be calling this the Woodland Amphitheater Mine. Because what it's going to do is it's going to focus all of that noise and dust directly towards the city of Woodland, so.
I was going to say, they have all the, you just go.
Yeah, and so, and then the AirPod thing is like that.
So do you, so do you live over there on that side?
I know there's this little one that Horton did.
The tiered system.
That would be good on like a little table.
Low, low, low income.
That one was a big hit with people because I think they were thinking of, um, whether people were like it would.
Income limits for.
You could probably put that.
Assistance, utility assistance. For what the incomes.
What we think is we have big things.
Mine is tiered.
Mine is the, the low income.
So we would raffle.
Because right now it's set at like twenty thousand dollars and then twenty-five thousand dollars for a house.
That's awesome.
That's what the low income. To qualify you to be a low.
I thought that.
Rent a place.
We don't, we do Thanksgiving in order to be involved.
That's what I asked. I don't think they passed that to the points. They said, oh, it's for the Woodland Action Center and I said, well, I, I thought it was Rotary Christmas. No, 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 it's all going to the Action Center.
Yeah, I'll have to talk to Steve.
I don't know. So these are questions that I have about that.
Oh, Pastor, oh, Steve Blackman, sorry.
So I'll have to ask him to share that information.
I don't know. And where do you, how far do you tier the system up?
Big tall guy, gee.
Yeah, that's a different, that's a.
Do you tier it up to four or five kids in the house? I mean, where do you draw the line at?
Well, I know the tier system.
Yeah, but sometimes I think, this is any manager, it's a point and they're really familiar with.
So in.
Yeah, so they had to spend some time explaining how.
Tier three.
In Mossy Rock where we have our place, it's like seventy-five hundred for.
Tier one.
A lotted amount. You have to pay this much.
Alright, we're, the time is, oh, did somebody hit record again?
We have twelve.
Awesome, thank you. The time is now eight twenty. We'll be going into a workshop on two different items. Our first item is we're going to kick it over to Ms. Coleman for utility rates and capital projects relating to those and we also have FCS online with us as well if we have questions that, that pop up. So, Ms. Coleman, I'm going to turn it over to you. Okay.
Okay, so basically, there's, there's about twenty slides down there up here.
Microphone. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. There's about, I think I needed a microphone, but anyway.
And as you talk, I'm going to ask, Martin, can you hear Tracy speaking? I just need to know if we need to move that other speaker closer to you. We might have to. Okay, perfect. Thank you, sir.
Okay, so there's about twenty slides and of those slides, a few of them are going to be pretty quick. This will be available on the city's website for anybody to look at afterwards. So we'll just kind of go into it from there. So the next slide, please. So, this is just a little bit of background and what this is basically saying is that FCS provided options to council during the workshop on August seventeenth in two thousand and twenty. And what I've made a snapshot of here, which is available in our records, available online, all of this is available online. I'm giving you the dates where you can look it up. So, council, city council had a workshop on August seventeenth and they had these options that was presented to city council based on what options we had available for rates. On December seventh, out of these options, council chose what to do. And so that's where your rates are based on. So I just wanted to give people some information that this wasn't just a once and done. It was talked about for three months, it was presented, and then it was also selected on December seventh of which way to go. Next slide. So, basically, what's happened since we did this utility study? So prior to the utility study, before we hired FCS Group, we had a selected seven percent across the board annually for water and sewer rate increases. It was a randomly selected number, seven percent, saying this is where, what, this is what we're going to do back in two thousand and twelve to move our rates forward because we were in dire straits of funding for capital projects. So they selected randomly seven percent, this is what we're doing. Since then, we came on board and we said, well, wait a minute, why are we just doing seven percent? Do we need seven percent? Do we need five percent? Do we need fifteen percent? Because we have a lot of capital projects. What do we really need? So we hired FCS Group and we asked them to complete a rate study. After we completed the rate study in two thousand and twenty, it was determined that we did not need to collect as much water for, excuse me, as much water, to collect as much money for sewer, but what we did need to collect is more water because we had more water capital projects that are needed versus sewer. So, based on the water and the sewer plant. So the water and sewer plants are available online. Everybody can go in there and look at the capital infrastructure projects. It's one chapter, I think it's chapter nine in the water plan, but you can look at it, they're outlined as far as what those capital projects are. So we decided that at that time that we really need to increase our water, but we don't need to increase our sewer. We can, we can offset the sewer a little bit and lower those sewer. So, when we completed the study, we've had two rate increases since nineteen, since nineteen twenty, since two thousand and twenty. In two thousand, in, in February of two thousand and twenty-one, it was our very first rate increase after we did the utility study and that, and that time we implemented the tier system as well. And so council also voted at that time to have another increase based on the rate study to occur in November two thousand and twenty-one. We did not increase the rates in November two thousand and twenty-one, we just increased them in February two thousand and twenty-one, and then we delayed the increase until August of two thousand and twenty-two. So since the study happened two thousand and twenty, we had one rate increase February in two thousand and twenty-one and we had another rate increase August of two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two. So we've had one increase per year. So currently, we've delayed having any further increases until February of two thousand and twenty-three without further council action. So at this time, we've had two rate increases, once in twenty-one, once in twenty-two. So if you want to know how to read your utility bill, we get a lot of questions because we have new, new utility company, Minol, who is now throwing these bills out. So what we did is we created a spreadsheet and this is on the website as well, and this tells you exactly how to read your bill. These are available out on the back counter for you guys to look at and it explains what the bill is and what it means. So those are all available to you. I'm not going to go through it in detail. It's online. There's handouts right here in council and so you can see how to read that utility bill.
And I think it's important to state as well that our bills looked nothing like this. They, it was a one-line item, this is your.
It was, it was. There was, there was, there was not the transparency that we have on these bills now. So now we have, so it used to just say water, sewer, garbage. This says, here's what your water is composed of. It's composed of your meter charge, your tier system, your utility tax. Here's what your sewer is composed of. Your sewer charge, your utility tax, so on and so forth. So it, it is, it is much more detailed, so we thought it was important to show what it, what this really means. And we actually received this example from Ridgefield because they had a lot of questions as well, and so they did this as well, so we kind of stole the idea from Ridgefield. So the next slide, so want to grab those on the way out. The next slide talks about, this is actually, it talks about our water capital improvement projects and this is actually taken right out of the utility rate study and right out of our water system plan. They're all available online. So the ones that I put checks by are what we've completed based on what we are supposed to have completed on the utility rate study and our water system plan. So we're required to maintain our water infrastructure and our sewer infrastructure. So based on the, the, the capital projects that were called out, we're on track based on the FCS study and based on the engineering study for our capital water system plan, we're on track to meet our capital projects as have been outlined in the plans. So the next slide. So this is what we've completed since the study in two thousand and twenty. We completed the Scott Hill Booster Pump Station and this kind of gives you an outline of what it addresses as far as that project. So it was an aging infrastructure, the quality of drinking water and for economic development. So that's what that capital project was about. The next one we completed was a filter restoration and media replacement of filter number one. Then we, then we did the West Scott Avenue Water Line Crossing Under the Tracks. This is part of ARPA funding. I've presented this before in multitude of presentations at council. We did the Davidson Water Line Crossing Under the Tracks. That was a Calhoun County grant, I've presented that a multitude of times. We did the Scott Avenue Connector, which is from Pekin to the tracks. We connected that water line and then we're doing right now the Water Main on Lake Shore Drive. So that's what we've done to date based on our capital infrastructure plan, which is in our water system plan and it was part of the utility rate study. The ones that we have not completed and we have on hold right now is the additional, and because of the, the utility rates and the questions that have come about, is the additional reservoir storage, which is a one point five million gallon and decommissioning our number two reservoir that was built in nineteen sixty. We do not have the West Scott Avenue Asbestos Water Line replaced yet. That's scheduled to be done. We do not have the, um, West Scott Avenue asbestos water line replaced yet. That's scheduled to be done in two thousand twenty-three. We do not have eight water mains that were identified in the water capital infrastructure plan to be replaced. We do not have our, we have not, um, upgraded our water meters throughout the city. Uh, we have not done the filter restoration meteor, filter restoration or media replacement for filter number two or number three. The bids came in high by a hundred fifty thousand dollars, so we halted that project at this time. And we have eighteen asbestos water lines to replace that had not been listed in the water system plan that we have not done either. So these are, these are capital projects that if you of council decide that you don't want to do these, I'm gonna go through each one of these and give you the, the pros and cons of, of not doing them. There's really no pro of not doing it, but there's, but the cons, and you can choose what you wanna do. So we'll start with the, um, with the capital infrastructure plan of the additional reservoir number four. So the cost, when we went out for this, when we did this water system plan and we did the utility study, the cost for the one million gallon water reservoir was three point four million dollars. And that was, um, to be paid for in years twenty-one and twenty-two. So we started the process of working towards building the new water reservoir because our number two reservoir needs to be decommissioned and it's leaking. So based on that, we went ahead and had the site cleared. We went ahead and grubbed. We had it surveyed, engineered, and, um, we're starting to do the design for the number two reservoir. And then we've kinda put that at a halt because of the uproar in the community with the utility rates. So I'm just telling you what it was at, and now in two thousand twenty-two, when we went with an engineer's estimate, it's looking at to be five million. Now, remember, this five million, the five million dollars is because of its one point five million gallon water reservoir versus a one million because we need to decommission the half a million gallon reservoir. So that's where the offset is on that half million. So, um, we have submitted for loan funding and grants from both Department of Health and USDA for this project. Um, part of it could be up to a thirty percent grant. Some of it could be a very, very low interest rate loan, could be one, two percent in order to obtain the funding for this. Um, we don't have to accept it, but there's timelines to hit those grant and loan applications. So we went ahead and submitted for it. If, if council decides not to move forward on the, um, building of these infrastructures, they could do that. We just deny, uh, uh, accepting the funding. We just say we don't want it. Um, so the consequences of not funding. So you can go ahead and fix the half a million gallon number two reservoir and not build the one and a half million gallon and decommission the half million. You can do that, but you have to do one or the other. It has been mandated by the Department of Health that we have to do one or the other. So you can either choose to fix the two million gallon at a half a million to three quarters of a million dollars, or you can build the new one at a cost of five million. Uh, water restrictions, so in the meantime, um, if we don't have the additional water storage capacity, you'll have water restrictions that will come about for lawn and, uh, garden watering, uh, being able to fill a pool or hot tub, restricted water usage during certain days, maybe go to twenty-four hour production of water. We will go to a twenty-four hour production of water. I'm sorry. Um, that means we'll have more man-hours at the plant. Uh, we'll have twenty-four hours of stress on our equipment for prolonged runtime during the peak seasons. And, um, it will impact our economic development for people coming through. Maybe they wanna put in, I'm just gonna throw an example out of Pacific Seafoods who need water production. So we would have to say, uh, we may or may not be able to provide them the water that's needed.
I will say that if Ms. Ray Keane is on here, we've, we've denied development in the past due to high water usage.
Um, so then, then, you know, one of the, one of the questions I have is, you know, when would be the best time to do this? Um, we've already spent the money clearing on land, engineering surveys, et cetera, and we know the costs go up each year. Just look at the difference in the cost from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two as we're working towards this plan, um, getting ready to build this. Of course, we do have a half million dollar, half a million gallon add-on in there. Um, then we have increased rates in the future versus stabilization, you know, reserves and borrowing powders, borrowing power. So you know that we're required to have so much money in our reserves, um, for our water and for our sewer. And so if you don't have that money in reserves, um, it's the ability to borrow, um, and go out for bonding. And then do you wanna spend a half a million to three quarters a million to fix a sixty-two-year-old concrete tank that's not lined and it degrades through the years with chlorine? So now you have a tank that's up there that's sixty-two years old. Do you wanna continue to put repairs into this tank? Um, or do you want to just bite the bullet and put your million and a half gallon in? So again, you can choose, council, if you want to fix the half million. I'm, I kinda highlighted that saying that you don't have to build a million and a half. You can fix the half million or you can build the million and a half. So these are just kinda some options for you. So the next slide.
Hey, Tracy, when we look at the, the bottom and the state's mandated that we do either or, what happens if we do nothing?
Yes. You'll, you'll be fined, or, or, you, well, we have, we, we, we cannot, we cannot not fix the half million because of, and I'm gonna show you in the next slide the reason why. Because we're losing water. So we can't not fix it. They, we told them we were gonna build another one based on our capital improvement plan, and they said, that's fine. We will continue to allow this one to leak right now because you're moving forward towards building the million and a half, but you cannot let that, you have to fix a leak or you have to build a new one. Either or. So you will be fined.
Ms. Dunn.
If you were to fix the half million ga, or the half.
There will be water restrictions.
How long is that fixable for?
There's absolutely no way to tell. It's a sixty-two-year-old tank. I don't have a crystal ball. It could, it could, it could, something else could go wrong with it in two years. It could be good for twenty years.
Have, haven't you already?
Yeah, have you replaced it twice?
We've replaced it, we, we fixed it twice.
And it's dealt with and it's still failing.
Yes, and it's failed at thirteen.
And isn't about a half million each time you replace it?
Say it again.
Is it about half million every time?
No, I think the first time it was a couple hundred thousand. So, yeah.
Okay, fair. Okay.
So the next slide shows, uh, reservoir, reservoir number two. There's your, your concrete, your half million dollar, half million gallon tank. Um, the reservoir drain, the re, the drain to the left is showing that we have about twenty gallons per minute, so we're wasting ten point five million gallons per year of water that we have produced. So I can show you, if you hover over the, the picture below, Pete, there will be a, the drain, if you hover over the drain slide, there'll be, you can play that video. I wanna show it to you. So that's the water that's running out of it currently right now. There's your reservoir, and it's going right back into the grounds. So we have a, we have a pipe that's coming all the way down, and it's going into a storm drain, and that's treated water. And again, that's ten point five million gallons per year. So we are mandated that we have to replace that. So there's your water that's just going down, literally going down the drain. Okay?
Fucking per gate.
Okay, so the next slide. So the next one we have is we have an asbestos water line, um, replacement project. Um, as everybody is aware that I've been speaking about for three years, we have a full-depth reclamation on West Scott Avenue. We have an asbestos water line in that road. Anytime you do a full-depth reclamation in a road, if you have an asbestos water line, you need to replace that line. Because what's gonna happen is if you don't, this line is over fifty years old. They have about a seventy-year lifespan. Inevitably, once you put all that money, which we received grant money to do this, one point two million dollars, into that road, that line's gonna break, and you're gonna tear up a brand-new road to replace it. So you wanna replace the line ahead of time.
People love when you tear up a road after you just did it.
A, after it's been closed down too. As you notice, we, we've been closing down roads all over town by fixing them. So anyway, so this water line wasn't, we cannot find the age of the water line. We know that it was existing when we worked on it nineteen seventy-two, fifty years ago. Okay? Uh, while we're not currently experiencing toxic concentrations of asbestos contaminants in our potable water because we test for it every single month, um, these asbestos cement pipes are absolutely reaching the end of their lifespan. This one in particular. Um, emergency, as you guys know, if you have to do emergency line repair, um, and asbestos are notorious for water breaks, you really have to keep them in place because of the dust that it produces. You have to have guys come in hazmat suits, so on and so forth. But if you can do it before it breaks and just abandon it and plug it at both ends, that's where you're gonna save the most money and save your costs to, to the, for your capital infrastructure. So again, AC pipes have about a seventy-year span. We've worked on this over fifty years ago, and so I, I believe in, in my heart that it's critical that we repair our asbestos water lines as we have projects that come up before they fail. So that's just what I wanted to say about that one. So if you look at the next slide, um, that new, that was a new AC water line as they put in. They were really light and resistant to corrosion back when they went in, and that's why a lot of people use them. But as you can see to the right, um, as they deteriorate, um, the fibers deteriorate within the concrete pipes. And then what can happen is you can have asbestos leaching into your water system. We do not have that right now, but we wanna prevent that from happening. So that's why you go through and you replace these water lines as they get old. So the next capital infrastructure plan, we have eight water mains. Um, I have gone over these with the crew and our, um, at our water plant, and I believe that we can delay replacing these water mains for a solid five years. I can't guarantee they're not gonna break. I can't guarantee that we won't have an emergency replacement, but what I can say is based on what we have in our records, we believe that they might be okay for another five years, and we can delay, um, replacing these eight water mains that are in our capital infrastructure plan. So if you wanna delay a project, this would be one that you would delay. Again, um, if we have an emergency repair, you're gonna have increased labor hours, increased construction costs, and immediate disruption of service and traffic flow, uh, if we, if we have ones that break. But I think we're.
What happens if one breaks, and so it gets delayed, and in three years, one of them breaks? What's the cost to replace it then?
Well, I don't know. It depends on which line it is. There's eight of them in there. So I mean, if it's, if it's a million dollar, and let's say it's a million dollars right now, and you have an emergency break, you're probably up to one point two five to one point five million, depending on where it breaks, how long you have to shut it down, and how many houses are infected. Cause we have eight different lines.
Where does that money come from to fix that?
It comes from your, it comes from your water.
From the, from the rates?
From the rates, and it comes from your reserves, and it comes from borrowing power.
Okay, so then we, we spend the one point, we'll call, we'll, we'll split the baby, uh, as Travis would say. So we spend the one point two five, uh, for this emergency repair in three years. What other projects is gonna be impacted at that time then? Because we just took the money from somewhere else, right? We, we just took money away from another project.
Well, you're, right. So let's say, for instance, let's just say, for instance, you say, well, I wanna do my water reservoir in three years. Then, um, if you lined up your water reservoir to use that funding, and then you have a water line break, then you're gonna have to use whatever funds you have in your, in your bucket. There's only so much money in the bucket. So if you use that for something, it's just like your regular house budget. If your washing machine breaks and you used your, your food money for that, then you gotta figure out, do I gotta go to a food bank? Well, we'd be going to somebody to get a loan. But you also have to make sure they have enough money in reserves to be able to borrow to get a bond, so on and so forth. And Pete's, Pete can talk more about, he's the finance guy as far as where we're getting our money from. I just apply for all the money, and then Pete tells us where we're gonna get it. No, I'm just giving you by the time. Okay. So then if we go to the next slide, Pete, um, so water meter upgrades, I'm, you know, this can be delayed. Uh, we have a cost, estimated cost um, to replace our water meters in town. I have brought in an example of a water meter that are in the ground. And this is, these are the water meters that are in the ground. They're from nineteen sixty, and so I brought this in so you guys can see. Um, we replace these, as you can see, they're full of water. They're hard to read. So, um, the majority of our meters in Woodland are those older water meters. So what we do is we replace them on a regular basis. So you can go through and replace the majority of them as part of your capital infrastructure. You can do a little bit of a time, which we've been doing for however many years. Um, these have been in the ground for an average of sixty years, and they're old, they're old haze meters. And so they're hard to read. If you guys wanna come up and look at it, they're hard to read. They're, they get filled with water. Um, so it's just, it's, this isn't a one-inch meter, by the way. You guys are three-quarter inch. Um, so anyway, we, because these are hard to read, when the meter readers go out and read them, we're required, we, we read, we, as in Public Works, read an average of fifty to seventy-five meters per month for accurate reads. So they send us a data list and say, hey, we don't have the meter reads for this. We have to go out to each individual house each month, whatever ones they couldn't read. And if they're hard to read, we go ahead and replace the meter, and if not, if we can read it, we just get the read and we send it back in to the billing. So this is something that you guys can delay because they're still, they're still working meters. But if you wanna delay it, this would be a project that you guys, I would recommend that you guys could delay if you wanted to save some of your capital costs.
I have another comment to that because you, you have given me this presentation with that wa, with that specific water meter, which I found very interesting. And we keep talking about delaying the, the meter upgrade, but the meter upgrade would make them remote read with more accuracy. And one of our biggest complaints over the last few months, I'm just saying, and I, and I know Mr. Boyce and I are not on the same page when it comes to this one.
Yeah.
Because I, I, I would delay something else and go to the meters, but that's me. That's up to city council. Um, but you could delay this project. However, we would be able to be more efficient, uh, with labor and time with the re-reads and also potentially, uh, and get rid of the meter reader contract, all of that, because this would all go into a remote, a remote reading situation that's more accurate.
Right, and there's, there's two different types of meter upgrades you can do. You can do an AMR or an AMI. AMR is totally automated, and it's very expensive. You can do AMR, it's, AMI is totally automated, more expensive. You can do AMR, which, um, they allow for automated meter reads. So because we're so flat here in Woodland, I'm very familiar with this coming from the power company. So because we're so flat in Woodland, we can actually have one handheld device and read probably ninety percent of our meters in one location in Woodland. So, and then they also, and these are only residential. These are not commercial meters. So, um, they also read every so many seconds. So if somebody says, hey, I, that, that isn't right, we can look on it and see right there, and it also lets us know if there's a leak too. So if somebody has, it's going and it's reading, it, it gives you a warning that says, hey, somebody has a leak, you can contact the customer and move from there. So there, it's kind of a neat, neat device, but at the same time, if you're looking to save money as far as for your capital infrastructure costs, this is something that you could delay because it's not, it doesn't have to be done. The ones that we have in the field are working. I just want you to be aware of it. Cause this is your guys' choice. Okay, on the next slide. Um, so we have, uh, filter restoration media replacement. So we've already replaced filter number one. If you remember when I presented this a couple of years ago, we had three phases of the filter replacement, filter one, two, and three, which are up at the water plant. Um, the cost was about a half a million dollar for each. Um, we had some new bids that came in for number two, and it came in, um, well, excuse me, the cost was about four hundred thousand dollars, and the bid that's just came in, came in about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars higher than what we had estimated based on what filter number one came in at. So we, we halted it because we hadn't budgeted for that. And instead of going and looking for money or pulling out of reserves, because of the community concerns with capital infrastructure spending, we went ahead and, and denied all of the bids that came in and said, we're gonna wait and see what we're gonna do on that because it came in a hundred sixty thousand more than what we were expecting. So consequences. Number filter, filter number two is compromised. It absolutely needs to be, needs to be restored, and I'll show you some pictures. Um, the filter wall between the clarifier and filter media has to rest it all the way through, and, um, you can see the structural integrity. I'll show you in the next filters. And it's about ten years past you have been, past, past due of being done. Um, filter number three, if you wanted to delay something, you could probably delay filter number three. It's not in as bad a shape, and it can probably be delayed for three to five years. So if you're looking for money to save on capital infrastructures, don't redo filter number three. Just go ahead and move on filter number two. So if you go to filter number two, uh, the next slide, I'm sorry. This is filter number one that was just completed. You can see it. It's absolutely beautiful. I am, I mean, I think that's the best our water plant has looked at, you look at that filter number, number one, um, since I've been here going on six years. And if you look at the next slide, this is filter number two. So if you look to the, to the, the left picture, there's actually a hole in the upper wall. And then on the bottom picture where the pipes are, that whole area down below, there's water leaking out of the bottom of the filter. So, um, we actually had to do the same thing on filter number one when we restored it. We had to have them weld in at the bottom of the wall for structural support. So we'll have to do that on this too. It also, um, doesn't work very well when you have your media filter is down at the bottom and all your pipes for your aeration in that filter. So this, this filter should not be delayed on repairs. This one should be repaired. If you wanna delay number three, um, I would recommend that you hold off on those costs. So then we have our sewer capital infrastructure plan, and, um, on there, I've showed, this is actually out of our, up, out of our, um, utility study, and it's also out of your sewer plan. And we have, um, we're in the process of doing our SCADA system. We've already replaced lift station number five. We're in process of replacing lift station eight. Um, we've done the mixing zone study. We've done the biosolids e-watering. That was a screw press, and we've replaced the UV system. So we're really on track with our sewer plan. If you go to the next slide, um, this is the next biggest project that's, um, due for our sewer capital infrastructure and that is the biosolid storage tank. So we submitted for a loan with the Department of Ecology and we're working on submitting a loan to USDA next month for the funding of this. We could delay this for a year or two, but we will need to construct within four years to give us our storage tank. And the reason why is we're currently constrained with our solids handling capacity. So I'm sure a lot of you remember that we had to decommission the ponds down at the bottoms that we used to use to haul our, our waste to and they used to land apply it. That was decommissioned by the Department of Ecology. They said we cannot do that anymore. So then if you remember before we did the screw press, we actually hauled all of our waste off and we paid $250,000 a year to have somebody else treat that waste system. So now what we did is we put the screw press in and now we haul that off and now we're down to a $70,000 a year versus a 250. So if you want to, if you, and what we've done in the meantime, we've taken our SBR three and we're using that as a storage tank for our biosolids. So basically, we're manipulating the system right now to store in our holding tank. We're using the SBR tank for holding, which we can use for a couple more years. But you're not going to be able to do that in a couple of years. So if you want to put this off for a couple of years, you can. But then you're going to have to go and you're going to have to build some type of a storage tank. I think we can get the cost down, this was an engineer's estimate of $3 million. I think we can get the cost down to under $2 million for some type of storage capacity tank at that system. I can't guarantee it, but I'm 99% sure we can reduce that cost. But that's what they came up with the engineer's estimate. But I think there's some value engineering left to be done in that estimate.
So is this the, this is an, a compromise from the $22 million project that we were supposed to have already completed?
So in our, in our capital infrastructure plan and in our, in our sewer system plan, they were, they were stating that by the year 2022 and 23, we're supposed to double our capacity at our sewer plant. We are not having to do that. We are not up to the 75% capacity yet for bringing sewage into the plant. But we are up above our capacity for being able to have a holding tank to hold our biosolids in order to be able to haul them off. It used to be when, when we were done treating, somebody'd just come in, truckloads come in, clear out the, clear out the sewer plant and then we were able to start using the, using the, let me think and make sure I use it, use, the, the digesters again. But right now the digesters are full and so our, our screw press only does so many, so many gallons per minute. So while our digesters are full, we can't get that producing through fast enough. So we need a storage area to continue to use our digesters to work on the 20-day process for treating sewage. I know it's, it's a very convoluted system and, and I'm not explaining it very well. But I'm telling you that you need additional storage capacity because right now we're using the SBR tank for storage capacity, which we can continue to do for a couple of years. So if you want to save off on building a tank, we can still use this. But once we get up to the, to the capacity where we have to use our SBR tank, you're not going to be able to use it for storage anymore. That's what I'm trying to say. So you got a couple of years that you're still safe if you don't want to build another tank. I'm not going to ask if there's any questions because that's a lot, I've said a lot. But, but if there's any questions, I can answer them possibly. Okay. So here's the summary, kind of some financial considerations. So what I want, what I wanted to do at, at the next, yes, please. On financial considerations, you know, you can change the tiered, you know, there's been a lot of complaints about the tiered rate structure system and that's fine. I mean, not, majority of cities use the tiered system, we didn't. So we went into that tiered system. You can, you can change it to just be a flat rate, but you still need to raise the funds for operations of your capital infrastructure. So you can't just say, well, we're just going to stop, we're not going to do tiered system. We're not going to have any more rate increases. You still have capital infrastructure that you have to maintain and there's still items in there that are mandated by the state. So if you eliminate this tiered syst, system, you're going to have to hire FCS or somebody to come back in and relook at some options to revise that rate study. And that, you're looking at approximately $30,000 to $40,000 for them to come in and say, if you don't want to use a tiered system, you can use a single block commodity system to pay for the cost of your capital infrastructure. But then what you have to realize, the reason why we went to that tiered system is because you have high water users and low water users. And one of the biggest complaints is our senior citizens, why are they paying and supplementing for people who are out there with, you know, five kids, a garden, a pool, and watering their lawn through an HOA or whatever? And you have a person that lives in a modular community that has no lawn and, and they want, they should, they aren't using as much water. And so why are they paying the same rate as somebody who uses a lot of water? So that was the whole reason why we kind of went towards that tiered system.
Fairness and equability.
Yes, so, so you can do that, you can change it back because that's what we had for all these years. But I just want to share with you why, why we had done that. And then also I sho, show, I have shown you on this presentation, some of the investments that are needed and why, and what ones you can choose to cut or delay. Also, you take the risk with public health, we all know that. Because if you have a leakage, and I'm not trying to scare anybody, I'm just giving you guys the facts. If you have one of the, one of the asbestos water lines and as we test monthly, if you see that there is asbestos in the system, then that's something that we have to go in and do and you don't have a choice. You have to do that. So you take a risk, a risk with public health. Also, if you can't treat your biosolids, so on and so forth, you won't have a risk with public health, but you're going to spend more money hauling that waste away for treatment versus doing it right here in your hometown. So, and then also if you don't have enough utility rates coming in and you don't have enough reserves, you can fail to have the financial means to be able to borrow to make the repairs when you do have a failure or to make loan payments. Because if you go out for a loan, you still have to make your loan payments, right? So, and they won't let you borrow if you don't have enough money coming in for utility rates. And they also won't let you borrow if you have to raise your rates to borrow the money. So there's, it's a, it's a big convoluted process and it's kind of, you're in a catch 22 when you're doing this. But there is a way to delay and if you want to delay, you have some options there.
So I want to ask you about FCS and the-
I have one more slide there.
Oh yeah, one more slide, go ahead. All right, away.
And then also, I just want to let everybody know that by state law, utilities operate as an enterprise business. So we as a utility operate as, as an enterprise business. The revenue from the rates must be sufficient to pay for operating capital expenses, expenses and any required reserves that we are required to maintain, okay? We can have no subsidy from general taxes for utility rates, so they need to, they need to pay for themselves. Council has, to, council can modify the city's rate structure if it chooses. However, new, the revenue from the rates must meet the financial principles as outlined in the previous slides that I've showed you. So just because you modify it, you still have to meet your capital infrastructure plan. And you must fully fund the financial obligations of the utilities. That's, we're required to do that. So the cost of the system is what it is. Changing the rate structure, freezing rates can be done, but the bottom line, you still need to generate X amount of dollars to pay for the utility, whether it's now or later. It doesn't go away. It only, it only ages. So we have the rate, we have the infrastructure in the ground. We have the process flow where we have to produce water. We have the process flow where we have to treat sewage and you have to do that. Unless you want to outsource it and then it's going to cost even more. So that's all I wanted to share and I wanted to give you options of what you could say, let's not build the million and a half, let's do the half million, get it fixed. Let's not change our meters that are in the capital infrastructure plan. Let's not change the eight water lines right now. Let's either take a chance and see if they're going to fail. And they might not fail. I mean, there's, nobody has a crystal ball. Everybody's doing things based on the, the age of the infrastructure. But there are a couple of things that you need to do and that is you have to fix the tank or you have to build a new one. You have to, in a few years, you're going to have to have additional storage because you're using additional storage capacity at the sewer plan now for what it's not intended for. But it'll, it'll suffice for a couple more years. That's not a problem. And that's kind of all I have to say.
So we, council arbitrarily increased rates by 7% every year, which began in, what, 2010?
I, I think it was 2011 or 12.
12, okay. Did they have a rate study at that time?
No, I think the last rate study was in 2007. Is that right? That I sent over to you in email? Was it 2007? I think it was 2007 was the last rate.
Were we behind when you, when you came in? But the, the rate study is, is your bible that you go off of to make sure that the system's operating based on projections?
I go, my bible is the capital infrastructure plan in our water and sewer that we submit to the state, to the Department of Ecology and to the Department of Health. And say what we're going to do and how, we have to submit all of our infrastructure, how old it is and what our game plan is to make sure that we can operate the system and that it's up and reliable.
Okay, so you, you follow those, those two plans. What's cost us quite, quite a bit of money to do, which we have to do every six years, right?
I think one's every six and one's every 10 and it, and some's cost us a couple hundred thousand and some have been 60,000.
So the rate study tells you how and when?
The rate study was done to tell us how are we going to cover our capital infrastructure plan based on our water and sewer plan, yes, that we submitted to the state.
So we basically have three books that, that we're, we're using to keep the system going on a timeline of repairs and maintenance.
Right, and right now, we are in, we are on time and on budget with everything we've done in the last five years.
I think you just got it to my head because that was my next question, is where are we? Okay, Mrs. Dowdell.
So I have a couple of questions. One, if we do not do the next rate increase that we have pushed off till February, what kind of money is that going to cost us for the 2023 budget?
So, so that is not a question to be answered here. That is something that Pete has some rough numbers. But FCS group really, if you guys want to stop what they already studied and said, this is what we're going to need to do, you need to hire somebody to come back in and say, if we stop the rates-
Just for, okay.
Right, but if we stop the rates, what does that do? And Pete has a number here. What does that do to us and how much are we not going to have coming in in revenue? And based on that revenue that's not coming in, then you have to determine, what are you going to cut from your capital infrastructure based on that?
Right.
Because it's, it's over a 20-year plan. It's not just, I'm not going to raise for one year and then I get to cut 15 things out. If you don't collect it for one year, you have to po, postpone your maintenance. And then you have to determine, now you don't have that money that's building on those rates that come in for the year and you're not building on that revenue stream. So now, and then, and then rates are going up, excuse me, not rates. Costs of supplies are going up and projects are going up. So it's not just, if I don't bring in a hundred mil, a hundred thousand dollars, what can I cut? Because next year, as they said for Ridgefield, for the road and what we just showed you on our, on our reservoirs, you know, we initially estimated it 3, 3.5 million, now we're at 5 million. And when I showed you on the filter, we estimated it to be at 350. The engineer's study came in and said, it's supposed to be 400 based on an increase in project costs for another year. And then it came in at 160,000 higher.
Right.
So I can't tell you that. I mean, we're really going to have to do another study to give you those answers that you want. If you want to freeze the rates, what's that going to do? And what, we have to really look at, what are we have, going to have to stop? But go ahead, Pete.
Okay.
So the, the rough number, I prefer Martin Chod FCS is, thank you. Per month, if we freeze the rates where they are, would be the difference of $33,583 in the water fund and $5,084 in the sewer fund for a total of $38,667 per month.
Per month, okay.
So, do you want me to see if Martin has anything to say? He's online and he's with FCS. Martin, do you have anything you would like to share with us in, in, in regards to the council member's question? Melissa's question?
I've, I mean, I've got more questions, but-
Thanks Tracy. No, that's a, I do not. If the, it's a good question, Councilwoman. The risk that the city runs if, like Tracy mentioned, is, is a trade-off. Like if, if you let you not increase rates analogous to, um, postponing or stopping, like a revenue stream for your utility. And what that means is, and what that means, Councilwoman, is exactly what Tracy mentioned. There's a trade-off and a trade-off is what you do want to not fund. I didn't see any work operations. You know, the figures that Pete mentioned, about $40,000 a month. And that's about $500,000 a year, which probably, um, wired sewer. So, you know, that, that, that $500,000 comes at a cost. That cost then equates to, it's either some type of utility program or it's investment in your utility CIP in decision for city to lead. What you want to put, what you let you not fund. And as a result, what are the, what are the risks or potential consequences of that decision?
Okay. So my next question being, and Martin, maybe this one's for you. In looking over the tiered system and doing some research on my own and even talking to Amanda some, and knowing that she had done some research as well, I feel that the tier system, and maybe I'm totally off base, but I feel that it is set at more of an individual rate versus a family rate. And I feel that it is not an adequate amount at each tier system and that it does not, that people with a family of four should not be hitting tier four every month in the tier system. And before the tier system, I feel rates were pretty decent. I've lived all over the country. My husband was in the military. I've lived in the desert. I've lived literally from end to end, coast to coast. And I have never seen rates quite the way they are. And even before the tier system hit, I still thought rates were crazy. But when the tier system hit, my water bills went through the roof, especially in the summer. And I get it, I water, whatever. But even in the off-seasons, I'm still hitting tier four, even with a family. And I just, I feel even some of the counties around, or some of the other cities around us, their ti, their tier system is a little higher at each level than ours is set in Woodland. And when I look, it says an individual should be at four or five, where our tier one is set at five based on an individual and the family should be at 12, where our tier four hits at 11.5. So I don't feel like tier four should be where a family of fi, or a family of should be at tier four. That that shouldn't hit the highest level. So I feel that maybe we should adjust our numbers a little bit for not the summer months. When we're not watering, that they should be, am I making myself clear a little bit with that?
Here's a, Pete, you want to go back to the video?
Tracy, Tracy could I answer that?
Yes, please.
Oh, it's a great question, Councilwoman. So Tracy, would you mind scrolling back to slide number four?
Yeah, hang on one second.
Sorry, I was trying to put you on the screen, Martin. And so we, we were pulling the presentation out, so just a moment.
Oh yeah, no problem. So let me know when it's back up now.
It shows, it's just-
I can speak to you.
It's this right here.
Yeah, I'm trying to get there, it's delaying.
Okay. So Pete, while you're pulling that up, I can certainly speak to you, the four-tiered structure, Councilwoman, and how those breakpoints are set.
Okay, it's up now, Martin.
Oh, great, thanks. Thanks, Pete. So up on the screen, council, you see a small text box on the, or inset that shows the breakpoints for tiers one through four.
Right.
So tier one stops at five, tier two stops at seven, tier three stops at 11 and a half. And then tier four is everything above and 11 and a half.
And I, and I did look at those numbers.
Oh, so, sorry, go ahead.
I did look at those numbers and I, and I thought what I had read was like tier one was based on like winter time and tier three is supposed to be like summertime. I can't remember what tier was. But-
That's right.
When I was researching online, those numbers seemed to be more of a, tier one was based on more of an individual person and their usage in a month than it was a family usage in a month. And so I feel like that tier system does not, what a family would use in a month is based on more of what one, one adult would use in a month. Because it, online it said, an individual adult uses between four and five in a month. And this, and a child uses between two and three in a month. So if you have a family of four with two adults and two children in a month, you're looking at, you know, almost 11. in a month, just washing the dishes, washing, you know, their clothes and giving baths. You're using almost eleven just with a family of four, and that's putting you in tier three without even watering the lawn. So I'm trying to figure out how tier one at zero to five is giving you a winter average of four people in your household.
Right, right. You know, I totally understand your question. That, uh, the tier breakpoints, Councilwoman, would be something that we would be happy to take a look at.
Okay, I would, I would very much be interested to get further information on that because I do know that some of our surrounding areas have higher breakpoints for those tier system.
Okay, all right. Well, we will be happy to take a, uh, to to relook at those.
Is that the thirty to forty thousand dollar FCI CS, FCS rate study, or is he looking at that?
No, that that thirty to forty is if you wanted to get rid of the tier system altogether and you wanted to go to a flat rate system. Um, but, I mean, it would be within that, within that price range for anything.
So are we just looking at adjusting the tiered system right now, or is that?
No, we're not looking, we're not looking at at anything right now. I'm just, it was up for discussion for council.
I'm just wondering what he was gonna.
No, he's saying he'll look at it if it, if it, if we assign that to them and then we want them to move forward.
I think it comes down to what you wanna delay.
Yeah, yeah. If you want, if you wanna look at the whole, whole system again, if you wanna look at just the tier system, if you wanna look at a flat rate, whatever you wanna do, we're just telling you the, the price range to do that, to have them come back out and look at what's there as far as where we're at, because again, we're on track and on schedule where we're at, and if we wanna stop right here and you wanna look at something else or have some different options, it's gonna cost you about thirty to forty to do that.
How, how does council feel about that, adjusting the rates?
Uh, yes, that's the fee to have it adjusted. And Mrs. Holland?
Refresh my memory, did, did we not have like three options for everything?
Yes, yes.
And council picked the options, what those are?
That, yes. Yes, that was what I brought up at the very first slide, second slide, that said, in two thousand seventeen, or whatever year I said it was, I'm sorry, my, my years have blended together, I apologize for that. But if you wanna go back to to slide number, slide number two, it basically said, yeah, August seventeenth of two thousand twenty. All that was brought to council. They said, here are your options. You can do a tiered system, you can do a flat rate or whatever. But remember, by having FCS group go back and spend the twenty to thirty to forty thousand dollars, that doesn't mean that your ra- that your water rates are go- that you're gonna go down. What they're gonna do is they're gonna say, okay, now, if we don't use a tiered system, one, two, three, four, and everybody's gonna be paying into the system at the same rate, everybody's bill's gonna change again. Doesn't mean yours is gonna get any better, doesn't mean his is gonna get any worse.
He's just redistributing the cost.
It's redistributing the cost.
We have a different group of people in here.
Yep.
And, and that's kinda what I remember is it was, we were COVID, in the middle of COVID, when we had all these presentations. And the only reason I remember is because I was where Tracy is now and you were over here and no staff was here and we were all spread out. And we had like a four-hour presentation on utilities that no one came to. I, I think we got a, um, oh, a petition, a petition. We got a petition from um, a group over on like Dunham Street, over there. And that was when we had the conversation about uh, discounting rates for um, people on fixed incomes.
Okay.
Okay, so that's kind of, I remember that, that was like a big, long, I've went back and watched that, that meeting over and over again. Every time somebody throws out figures that I'm like, it's been two years. We've talked about a lot of things since then, so um, but what I remember of that, what council ended up picking, what they selected out of the three options was like the middle of the road. It was gonna, I remember specifically it was gonna be painful. I thought it was, it sucked. But the amount of money, my recollection is that the amount of money needed to fix the projects that were go- that needed to be fixed, that was what motivated council to pick the option that they picked.
And they're up there on the board now.
Yes, and, and it, it was kinda like when you guys all talked about the bottoms and you had like six options and then council picked an option and that's, that became the lay of the land. And that's kind of this.
So, and one of the things I wanna share too is when you go to a flat rate structure, you know, we're looking at the tier system, we're saying, okay, tier one is, you know, three cents, tier two is four cents, tier, tier three is five cents and tier four is whatever cents, right? So if you, if you change it and you don't do a tiered system and you just do a flat rate, it doesn't mean you're gonna get the three cent option. You could now be, everybody could be in the four and a half or five cent option to be able to cov- cover your capital infrastructure. So don't think by moving from the tier system, I'm not saying I'm not, I'm not recommending you guys go either way. I'm just saying, don't think by moving that, that tier system, that you're gonna be at a better rate, utility rate for your water than you already are now. Because you're, right now, you're getting a reduced rate for tier one, tier two, and then as you use more and more water, you're paying more of a rate because now you're at the higher water production for that peak time, water production. Go ahead, Pete.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Um, I also wanted to remind folks too that, you know, the, the water rates were the concern because most of the projects are up front, where most of the sewer projects are further down the line in that, you know, twenty-year time span. And if you read the, the water study FCS put together, and correct me if I'm wrong, Martin, uh, it was the first three years of increases in water that were, you know, the ones that were really hurtful. It was fifteen and a half for the first three years. After that point, it dropped to five and a half. Now sewer, we had been doing the seven percent increase every year and that dropped to, uh.
I believe it was five.
It was, it was a lot.
Yeah, yeah, it was, I wanna say it was, it was less than the seven.
Yeah.
I had the number.
I believe it was five, but.
Uh, I think it was two point six percent is what sewer is. Um, so there was a give and take there. Um, but the first three years, and I think that's what the public is feeling, you know, that's, that's where a lot of the hurt was gonna happen.
And due to COVID, it all got delayed. I remember Tracy's projects were delayed because the health department said nobody could work on half her projects because they were all gonna die of COVID. And then the billing, did that not get, the switching to, if I remember correctly, it was, we'll switch to Manol when we switch or something.
Well, so after the study was complete, we did implement uh, the first rate increase. Um, it was February sixteenth of twenty-one, is that right Tracy?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, so that introduced the tier system and that was the first major rate increase. There was another one due in, in, the reason it was picked February is because we usually do these in November. Uh, but because of when we received the rate study and it was accepted, that's why it went to February. And then it was to get back on the, the same November date, so November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one was to be the second. But council decided, if it looks great until we get Minol on, let's not do that one. And that one did not happen until August of twenty twenty-two. And then we delayed the November twenty twenty-two right now until February twenty-three.
And again, back, back, back to my, my statement earlier during my report that Minol is, I don't wanna, our, our practice, they're following our, our process and that's why, and I know that we had a lot of folks show up saying, I can't believe you're raising the rates again. Minol was just going with what we gave them. So when they were coming, when we were talking about raising rates in November, that was Minol saying, well, this is what you gave us and we did it in August and we're gonna do it again in November, which now we're, we've kicked to a, a, a later date of February at this point unless you change that. Yes. More questions for Tracy?
I do have a question, I just am trying to think about that.
Miss, Mrs. Holland, were you done?
I am.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, get it now before we move on to the next workshop.
I am.
I would like to ask a question about if we did get rid of the tiered structure. From your description, Ms. Coleman, it was uh, the elderly in this community who use a low amount of water, have a lower bill. So if we get rid of the tiered structure, it's going to increase their cost. Um, what is the uh?
It's gonna cre- increase anybody's cost.
Well, it's gonna increase everybody's, but.
Single or, or two household, right?
What is our low income? Um, application, what are the, the costs there? I guess that could be a question for FCS.
Are you talking about the threshold?
Yeah, what are the threshold, what are the numbers?
That was discussed as well, and we all thought that it was extremely low. It's twenty thousand for a single and twenty-five thousand for uh, dual, dual income, right? Uh, we all thought that was low, even FCS came back and said that they thought that was low, but based on our demographics within our community, that's the number that we went with. Uh, we could change it, and I know where you're going with this because we've talked about this for, we could change that, but it is also gonna change the rate structure for everyone else. So it's still gonna be passed on to, there's still gonna have to be a change on, on, on a normal household, I guess, to, to cover.
And we, we also compared our low income applications for assistance for utilities to the county and others around us. And we're right in line with what everybody else is offering as far as what, what your household income would make in order to obtain assistance. But again, if, if we provide assistance to others, that comes from the ratepayers. It's not a free bag of money that comes out of la-la land. You guys supplement that for people who need assistance.
How many are using it right now?
I don't have anybody using it. I have four applications in hand.
I thought we had one.
So looking at Washington State, low income, this, I did a quick Google search. It's saying two hundred percent of federal poverty level, is it twenty-seven thousand for one person, thirty-six thousand for two people?
That's federal.
Yeah, and I think, well, this is for Washington State, but we're.
Is that for USDA commodities?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
So, I mean, we're at twenty thousand and twenty-five thousand for two people? I, I feel like we can go up. We only have a couple of people on it, the program, plus we've allocated ARP money for it that's not being used.
The ARP is for those that can.
Could not pay.
Could not pay, not, and not to supplement.
Okay.
That, that, that.
And we have another program available through CAP, uh, Lower Columbia, that also helps people who are behind.
So we'll fish.
Yep, yep.
Fish in Calhoun County.
Yep, and so they help if you're behind, they will get you caught up and help you as well, so.
I, I feel like we would have more than two people or four people on it.
So, so then.
I, I feel like there needs to be more on it than what we actually have.
Yeah, and we can do that.
A lot of people wanna take advantage of it.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, it's not, I mean, just for whatever reason or another, when we had the, the first ARP, I wanna call ARP money, but the, the first money that came through, we couldn't give it away to the folks that were massively behind for months. They would not fill out the, the one sheet paper that said, you're behind, this is my name and this is that, here's your four hundred dollars. They would not take it. They would not take it.
Well, they wanted, they wanted it to go to someone who's more needy. That's what we.
And that's, that is a fact. They will, and I remember having the conversation that though, if they are a client, they will have, they will feel more comfortable coming in to Woodland Action, to Lower Columbia CAP, to fish and asking for that help rather than come to the city where everybody will know their business. And that is a lot of it. It's, it, it, they know if they come to, if they come to Woodland Action, what goes on in there stays in there and nobody's gonna be running their mouth. It is common knowledge that historically, in this town, if you, if your kid gets kicked out of class before that kid's even home, grandma knows about it in half the town. And that's kind of the thing is I, and so what we were doing is we at Woodland Action here, Switch My Hat, Woodland Action me, what we did was we applied for um, things that we could pay people's utility bills. That is not a service, very few people, very few entities in Calhoun County will pay a utility bill. And that was one of the things that we applied for a grant to get that money to help those people because hearing here that people would not take the money, even though we were trying to push folks over there like, hey, if you fill this out, it'll wipe out your bill, there's tons of money sitting there. And then I think at one point, council wanted to like shift some of the money over to um, Woodland Action to administer, and I think that died on the blind because I don't even remember. But, but it's, you're looking at USDA commodities numbers to, um, and how that program works is you come in and you say, you self-declare your income to be able to um, obtain USDA commodity items, which are food items like your basic staples of um, like eggs, cheese, peanut butter, canned meat, that kinda stuff. So those kinda numbers, it's for food. Um, I think I remember we talked about like what the county was using for their discounted property taxes. Am, am I right on that? I remember asking what the county uses for discounted property taxes for low-income folks in our county. What, what, what percentage does the county use? Do we know?
I, I had Martin, um, did a comparison, I can see if I can look that up in my email right now. He did comparison with other cities. Do you remember that on Sunday afternoon? But I can see what I found here.
Martin, do you remember on the other municipalities, I think you did compare Calhoun County. Do you remember what they were as far as the, the level um, to be able to qualify for low-income assistance?
Um, I'm looking right now. Tracy, we did, um, we did not look at Calhoun County. Uh, but I can certainly, um, after this meeting, I can certainly look that up for you and, and uh, let, let you know what those are.
Can you share which ones you did compare and look up and compare us to? Cause we just had you do that, I think, a month ago.
Sure, yep. Um, and I can send you this worksheet to Tracy and, and Pete. Um, but we compared ourselves to, um, it was a pretty comprehensive survey. Uh, we included the cities of Auburn, Bellevue, Blaine, Bothell, Buryan, Cashmere, Centralia, um, Ellensburg, Inumclaw, Issaquah, Kirkland, Mercer Island, Port Angeles, Redmond, Renton, Richland, Semenage Plateau, Seattle, Shoreline, Spokane, Tacoma, Wenatchee, Woodinville, um, and the city of Yakima. It was a pretty broad range. Um, and uh, just, um, just in terms of um, general or very high level um, um, takeaways from the survey, uh, the discounts ranged from anywhere between twenty-five to about fifty percent. Um, seventy-five percent was the highest. Um, those were being offered by, I think Bellevue and the city of Seattle. Um, in terms of qualifying criteria, almost everyone was at sixty-two years and older. Um, some communities used um, a, a limit of a hundred and fifty percent of household income. Um, what if percent of the federal poverty level, excuse me. Uh, and then there were some communities which um, actually set a specific dollar amount for the um, uh, for the um, qualifying um, income. But most, most cities were using a um, in, uh, an income that was indexed to the uh, federal poverty level.
Yeah, and you also looked at Sultan and Ocean Shores, which was the same population of us. They're about sixty-two hundred and seven thousand. And they did a income criteria with sixty-two or older um, for Sultan. And it was a hundred and twenty-five percent of the federal poverty guidelines, which was thirty-four thousand six eighty-eight for a family of four in two thousand twenty-two. And then also they had no age requirement for Ocean Shores, but it was a hundred and twenty-five percent of the federal poverty guideline, which again, thirty-four thousand six hundred eighty-eight for a family of four, which is, isn't a lot of money for four people. So it was still, it still was in that twenty-five thousand for a family of two, too, so, two as well.
Yes, Mr. Smith?
I, I think we can all agree it's a very complex issue for us. I would be open to uh, funding FCS to do uh, some ideas for us, I guess, put our ideas on paper and come up with something. And then uh, do a public open house and get feedback from people on what they would like to do, whether it's get away from the tiered system and know that they're gonna have an increase. And also look at increasing the uh, the low-income help. Um, that's my take on it. I don't know where all the rest of council stands, but that's personally what I would like to see.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Smith?
I think an important point for, I think an important point for FCS to know is, do you want to delay any projects? And for how long or eliminate projects? Because what they're looking at with their rate study is how do we fund? the capital projects? And the capital projects are what are really, it's not operations that's driving the rate increases, it's the capital projects. So if council's considering delaying some of those, if we're gonna hire FCS, it would be good to be able to give them that information.
I think it would be nice to have a a couple of different plans from city staff on what they feel would be best. Either A, B, C, and then have FCS study this and go from there. I mean, we could sit up here for hours at this point and hash out and and try to figure out what's best for us. Um, I I think we would have to have another workshop to even come up with a plan.
Well, I gave you options in there. I gave you all the things that you could delay.
Yeah.
That, I mean, you can delay the water meters, you can delay replacing water line. I mean, all that's in this this presentation. You get choices of what you wanna delay. Now, if you wanna have a workshop with citizens, say, what do you want to delay? You can do that.
Yeah.
And I told you what you can't delay. You can't delay your filter tube.
Yeah.
You can't delay fixing at least a half million gallon reservoir. Those things you can't do. Um, because you have to be in compliance. And and all of the capital infrastructure plans are approved by the Department of Health and the and the state, the Department um, of Ecology. So those are all what they have approved in our plans for the city of Woodland. If you defer from that, you have to go back and tell them, we're deferring, and you have to submit that to them and and tell them the reason why. But two things you can't defer are the two items that I just told you. All the rest you can pretty much say, oh, we're gonna wait a couple of years.
Yeah, and I think that's what I'm saying, like, the the stuff we can't defer, put it on paper, this is it, and then this project, this project, add it in, says, this is what the cost would be, or if we did this project, this project, this is what the cost would be, and then figure out if we wanna go away from the the tiering structure and what route, I guess, the rest of council wants to go, so.
So I think I would like to see it if we did the eight water mains, delayed it. I know you said five years, but I mean, even delaying it three years, so that we're not to a point where we're at the five years and it's like, wait, now we've had emergencies come up in three years? Um, and then even delay the water meters a year or so to wait. If we look at it and we say, okay, let's hold off one year of our rate increase, that gives us delaying the water meters and that makes up some of that difference in just delaying that, where they can come up with, looking at that. Even going ahead and doing the filter restoration on number two and putting off number three. Um, I think that's some of the things. Um, I think that definitely the the sewer lift station, um, the biosolids tank and the one point five million reservoir, I think those are definite things that we need to continue moving forward on. I don't think there's any point in putting Band-Aids on things that are um, some major issues that there's no point in spending half million to almost a million dollars on Band-Aids that we're gonna be spending on the upgrade anyways, so rather go ahead and spend it there. But um, that's just some of my thoughts as they are looking at the plans. I mean, you want definitives. I think that's some of the places to start where some of the things you say to hold off on, at least delay some, a couple of years to get a ground for this year. I I think we've been hit hard. Minol has been a huge transition for our community. Um, I think the economy has been hit hard right now, and this initial fifteen percent hit everybody hard. So as we get adjusted to it, let's ease into it for our community, and I think let's bring this back to them with some options that they can have a say in, because COVID, I wasn't a part of it. I know part of our committee up, I mean, part of our council wasn't part of it, that we have a voice that wants to be heard right now. I think it's important for them to all have that option to be a part of it, so.
Mr. Smith?
What would it take to go away from Minol and go back to city billing?
Oh, take Ron.
I was never a fan of Minol, so I would like to know that answer.
So I I would need to look at the contract to determine, you know, how long we have to stay with them or what the what the parameters are for getting rid of the agreement. Um, in-house, we're, we still have the software, but the staff member has moved on. So we would need to recruit at least. We'd need to give some thought about if we're gonna stick with monthly or bimonthly.
I'm personally for going back to bimonthly. It's lower cost.
It was lower cost.
So if we went bimonthly, it would be one FTE. If it would be monthly, it would probably be more. I I think with our current staff, we've gained some efficiencies and we might be able to reduce it from what we were predicting before. Uh, but it would still be more than a full-time equivalent.
And I can promise you, if we switch back to the city, there'd be hookups as well. It would not be the smoothest transition as well.
You couldn't use this archaic system of handwriting and hand keying in into an Excel spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Like, in what universe does a multimillion-dollar entity do that?
I agree.
So the the reads from meter readers, the the company we we use to read the meters then and now, it's downloaded into the software, so those numbers are not individually put in. However, there are some, uh, it's my understanding, there are some uh, uh, special cases where you have leak adjustments and things like that, where there has to be some manual input. We wouldn't be able to give the detail on, that you see on this bill, you know, if you're, we talked about it earlier, we had, you know, one line for for water. It's my understanding that the Vision software we we did use wouldn't be able to do that. We would have a hole in the data, so we we would have to, right now, everything's being entered in Minol's system. So what we did, we had reports generated from the Vision system, our old system, gave that to Minol, they entered it into their system. And now we're just entering everything into the Minol system. So, you know, when we're searching up customers' histories and things like that, if we came back to our system, we'd have to get reports from Minol, try to integrate those into the Vision system. So it would take several months to uh, figure out the IT transition and to um, hire staff and get staff trained. But it it is possible.
Well, maybe in looking at that, and if we went back to bimonthly, also looking at what it would cost if switching to new meters, if that would transition smoother as well.
But those cost money.
I know, but if it went to more digital.
That was the point. So the whole point, when coun- council had this discussion, and yeah, there was a couple of different council members sitting here, but we beat this horse to death. And the point, the the initial, the initial thing was to change it so people could budget better, because Calhoun's PUD did the same thing. They used to be the opposite month of the city. So one month you were getting bent over for three hundred and fifty, the next month it was five hundred, it just was a different entity. And then they switched to monthly billing. So what the council conversation was, is that it would be easier for people to budget, right? Because you have your PUD bill that comes every month, you have this that comes every month, your house payment, whatever, that you could budget it better. Because I still, for the life of me, can't figure out why one random bill will be six hundred dollars for no good reason, and then the next one's two hundred. Anyway, but the whole thing was, we were to do that, go to monthly billing, farm it out, so that we didn't have to hire multiple staff members with benefits and union stuff and yada yada. And that the eventual thing was that we would get digital meters that actually read what you actually use, not what some guy thinks he might have seen, cause we all have mud-covered meters that we know nobody's looking at. But they swear they check them, though we know they can't possibly, because you can't see through the mud. But that was the whole point. There was like this whole stepped approach of how this was gonna go, with probably twelve, was there not like twelve hours, I think, of presentations? I think it was at least twelve hours. Nobody cared. Two years go by, now it's the biggest thing in the universe, and and we beat it to death two years ago. And so it's, it's, we spent the money, we spent the money on the study, we've spent money on a whole bunch of stuff. But for me, the knee-jerk to, oh, whoa, whoa, nobody, nobody paid attention and nobody cared. It was in the paper, it was live. All of this went on for months and months. Now, two years later, now it's the most important thing in the universe. Well, I think from Tracy's presentation, everybody should be aware at how much things cost, and that was the point of why rates had to go up, right? That was the whole point. It was dumb that somebody thought seven percent every year, just because that's a good number, and that that went on for ten years. When I remember specifically asking in a council meeting, long before I was ever elected, when they were going to let one of them sunset, and I was the only person who came to the public hearing and asked to let it sunset, and they said no. And it's like, but does it pay, how do you know it pays for anything? And so I thought it was the smartest thing in the universe that you guys decided to actually get a rate study, so you knew how much you actually needed to run everything, instead of let's just pick a random number and that's the number we go with. It doesn't make sense. A business doesn't run that way, and you're a multimillion-dollar business. You can't just make decisions because somebody didn't like it. Apple doesn't shut everything down and rethink everything because some, a handful of people pop off at every council meeting. Come in, call me names, I literally don't care, you can call me all kinds of stuff, I'm gonna go home and I'm gonna take my bath and go to bed and go to work tomorrow. But that doesn't mean we go back and spend taxpayer dollars again, to do the thing again, that we already did. I mean, I, it's, it's nutty to me. I get it, you guys wanna make everybody happy. I think it's, my bill is what my bill is. It's something I can't control, just like I can't control gas. I can't control how much anything I get charged, right? It, I really can't. I go to the store, milk is five dollars one time, it's four dollars the next time. I can't control that. And so somebody said I was being a smartass or flippant, because I said that, but I can't control that. As a council member, I'm here for what, another year? And then another council, you guys can overturn every single thing this group does tonight. The next group can completely overturn it all, and spend more city money, more taxpayer money, to do this all over again. And y'all can do it forever, and that's fine. But that is why you have seventy-year-old pipes that have not been replaced, that have asbestos. Water going through asbestos, and I think we've all heard that if water gets, if asbestos gets in that water, that's emergency level right there. Asbestos abatement is millions of dollars. So, okay, so we put that off, and that's kinda what the the thing has been, and I think people forget. We had a revolving door in the Public Works Department. We had a apathetic Public Works Director that went great with that administration, because they were all kind of apathetic. And then we had a couple people who weren't here very long, and then we got Ms. Coleman, who had to sit down and figure out how in the heck this town got to the point it is. And then people think, I make this up, but I've listened to this woman talk since the day she got hired, and how much work everybody in Public Works has went through to get to this point, to show the world, this is, it's catastrophic level. This is how much it costs, and every minute that you debate it, it gets more expensive. We saw that during COVID. It was like her plan at the beginning of COVID, something cost a hundred grand, now it's half a million. Because they can, I don't know what the logic is, but that's just what it is. And I mean, I'm not trying to get on a soapbox about, but this, I really want everybody to seriously think about it. I get it, you wanna make people happy. But at what cost? At what cost? And then to be back in the same boat we've been in? And I've lived here a long time and watched the same cycle of get on the gerbil wheel, and nothing gets done, and that's what's gonna continue to happen. I mean, I just want everybody to really think and remember, and go back and watch the YouTube videos where we beat this to death. Like, Mr. Fredericks is probably the most financial-minded person and was sat on this board for what, a decade and a half? That man knew numbers like, probably even more so, no offense, Mr. Boyce. Like, that man could pull things out, and he had so many good talking points, because he'd been here so long and looked at all of it. And a lot of what he said made sense, and I think that's kinda how the conversations were directed, was he's a financial guy, and it sucked. I pay more now than I did then, too. I'm just like everybody else, we all do. But the knee-jerk reaction, because a handful of people come in and yell a whole bunch, now we spend every other person in Woodland's money to do a study again. It just doesn't make sense to. And then my other que- and then now that I'm off my soapbox, my question is, what do businesses? How, why is it that no business has come in and said they have seen an increase? Did businesses not get an increase? Is it just residential?
No, they've, they've had an increase.
Cause I, I know the the water sewer garbage bill at Woodland Action got higher.
Yep, yep. All the businesses have had increases.
So everybody did, it's just residential, okay. I was just, I was just curious. I just thought maybe they, they didn't get an increase, because not one, I don't think any businesses have come in.
Are they complaining as well? No?
No.
How much did we pay for the, for the original FCS study?
Martin, are you online?
I wanna say it was around two hundred thousand.
Around two hundred thousand dollars.
I think, I think so, two twenty-five.
So I, I want you to know, I'm not saying that we should move forward with this because of a few that have sat in the audience, but I've also seen, since we did the increases of the tiered system and the steps, I've seen my own bill and neighbors' bills and everything. I don't feel it is. I feel like his continuing to, especially now that it is monthly, continuing to look, it's not evening evening out. I continue to see that there's discrepancies that I don't feel. People are in homes that are like, I can't stay in my home, and I don't feel like it is an equitable balance in Woodland for people to feel like they can stay in our city. And if people are feeling like they need to move out of our city, and something is not right with our study that we have implemented, and we need to relook at it, so people feel like this can be their home still. And if it costs us thirty to forty thousand for our residents to feel like this can still be home, who have lived here for thirty, forty thou- forty years or for decades, then we need to look at it. And if we come to the same conclusion that we already have, at least they feel like they've had a voice. And with COVID being part of this, I feel like we need, we owe it to them, and I think that's where we're at. So.
Mr. Smith?
I, I, you guys both have valid points. I, and um, we went through all of this on COVID. Part of these meetings were online, and that is one of the reasons we voted during COVID uh, to come back in person, is because it felt like we were going through the motions, and we weren't, we we weren't getting a good dialogue during that time. Um, and we ended up getting fined by LNI.
I would say that
Because of it.
We took extra steps to get back in person, long before anybody else did.
It personally cost me three hundred dollars to help pay my portion of the fine for voting to go back to in-person. So, I, like I said, I'm personally okay with the uh, spending the thirty to forty thousand dollars to go through the study and maybe try to have a uh, public meeting and get some input, so that people feel like they have a a voice in it. And I agree with you. Um, we did not have the turnout for people coming in during that time, but that was during COVID.
But we were online, too.
I I agree, and I I don't think we had the particip- participation that uh, I feel like we would have now, today, if we did have a what do you call those meetings where public open house, an open house, to come in? I I feel like that would be uh, a good thing to do if we had it. Options on paper, whether we have FCS study, come in and do this, or we just have options to say, we can have FCS do this, this is thirty to forty thousand dollars, or we can stay this course, and it's zero dollars and we can get this stuff done. Maybe we can go that route. Maybe we can go that route and see what the public actually says.
And I would love to include it in a bill that had a flyer that said we were having it, if at all possible.
So, this is what I, I think, um, needs to occur. Uh, we need to have, we need to get back, um, and get, do we need to get an estimate from FCS? Okay, I think we should have an, another workshop on December nineteenth during our regular meeting. There's no hurry, we've, the rates are, are- Oh, wait, we have until February, r- right now, you can even go further if you wanted, um, and have another workshop, and we will bring some more information back. We'll have, we'll have, uh, Tracy put together a list. It sounds like we, we're, we're all, it sounds like there's a, there's some, I don't wanna say full agreement, but there's some, some options that need to be brought back forward, whether do nothing, I'm not saying that's what you said, but I'm going to decide of, uh, be more conservative and stay the course, to delay some of it, and what does that look like?
I, that, that's something that we cannot bring forward, Mayor, um, on the meeting of, of this month, that's what we're saying. If you, if, if you council want to decide to do nothing and keep the rates where they're at, it's gonna require an entire relook. It's not something you can say, well, if you don't do anything, it's gonna cost you this, if you do this, it's gonna cost you that. That's something that can't be done-
Okay.
-without, without engaging FCS group and the whole kit and caboodle. We already have the presentation of your options. If you wanna say, I want you to delay all these options for two to three years, just know that it's gonna push your rate increases out, because again, it's over a twenty year span, and so you won't have it front loaded now, but that means that right now where your rates have increased, let's say the twelve percent, and now they're supposed to go down to five percent every year after that, now you're not gonna have that five percent. When you delay your projects out, now you might go up to, you're still the twelve percent you just spent your money on, but then over the next twenty years, now you're gonna get seven and eight percent increases over the next twenty year span versus your five percent because you're choosing to delay projects, that's choosing to delay the cost of projects, and your projects are gonna cost more. So you're just delaying it and pushing, as you say, the can down the road, and I hate to say that, but, but that's-
You kick it.
You kick it, okay? You're kicking the can down the road. So you can do whatever you want, but you're not, you have to pay for this eventually. And you're either gonna pay for it from an emergency break, from some type of flooding going on, from your tank that is now, has to fully be replaced. You're, you're gonna have to pay for it regardless. Do you wanna just bite the bullet like you've already done and spent all this money on? And you can see which way I'm leaning, because all the money's been spent. Next year was supposed to be the year where it goes just to five percent, and you're not in that twelve to seventeen percent anymore.
So in another month?
Yeah.
In another month?
Yeah, so, so, so you're, you're getting to that stabilization period, and now you're saying, er, put the brakes on, let's not do this, let's halt, and let's delay all the projects. So then your rates are gonna eventually have to keep going up, more and more and more. It's just the way it's gonna work, and I don't want, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna sit here and tell people that it's great, it's gonna be fine, everything's gonna be great. Because that's not gonna be the case. I can't guarantee if a pipe won't break tomorrow, or if it's not gonna break for ten years down the road. I'm just here to tell you, your aging infrastructure that's in the ground, what, what has been studied by engineering firms, three different engineering firms for the city, what has been approved by the state, and what your options are. You can delay it, but your delay, your delayment is also gonna cause increased rates because you're gonna have to pay for larger capital projects because the cost isn't where they are today. It's all on your rate, uh, it's all on your, your current value versus future value of dollars. The reason why a lot of these projects are costing more now is because of the supply demand. We aren't able to get some of the materials, some of the steel, et cetera. So that's the reason why the costs are going up. Maybe in two or three years, we're gonna have more of those materials come in, and the project, the project costs might go down or stay stagnant and not increase for the cost of living that we have each year. Because as you know, when we had the big forest fires and stuff, the cost of timber went up, now it's come down a little bit. But that doesn't mean, never came down to where it was though, we all know that. So, I, I think by delaying it, that's fine, you can delay it, and you can freeze your rates, but you're gonna have rate increases longer down the road because you're gonna be expending that now over the next twenty years.
What do you need from them, right now? You, you gave your presentation-
Yes.
You got it all out there, thank you, there's been a lot of discussion this evening. What do you need for direction from council at this point?
If they want FCS group to move forward and look at, um, looking at a different tiered system, we need to know that, instead of getting away from the tiered system, if they wanna look at a different type of tiered system, if they wanna look at flat rate structures, if they wanna look at, um, what's it gonna, what, what are our rates gonna do if we delay these projects? That's what I need to know, because we can't move forward unless we know what projects you wanna delay. And I think you talked about having an open house for the citizens. Do you wanna bring them in and say, here's the projects that we can delay, what do you prefer? Before you move forward with FCS group, and then you need time for them to put that together.
Do we wanna have an open house on December nineteenth?
I don't know if we can.
Can we have the open forum for-
Slap one of them survey monkey things out there.
We can, we can put some stuff together then, why, why don't we start there? Why don't we start there?
Yeah, we can, I mean, it's the same presentation, it's just, I could just list, here's the things that you can delay, and here's the things that you have to do, and choose, choose all of them that you wanna delay, or do a vote and say, how many do you wanna delay?
Yeah, you can come here and have, not from up here, but yeah, you, you show up and-
For an open house.
For an open house.
What kind of-
Didn't we have that? Didn't FCS have an open house?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I, I just remember there was oranges and some, some drinks and cookies. Oh, but I thought we did have those.
We got the crickets and the frogs.
I, I think people are feeling the effects, I think you would have more, um, more participation at that point. And, and maybe after the participat, I could not say that word today. Um, maybe people actually can see your presentation, and maybe you have this head drop moment of...
Well, I think a-
Cause that's where I'm sitting at up here.
I think a lot of it is, w- like at your house, like, let's say, you know you need to replace your roof, your roof's only good for a certain amount of time, and you know you need to replace it, and you put it off, and you put it off, and now it's like they come out and quote you, and it was, a couple years ago, it was fourteen thousand, now it's thirty thousand, and you're still putting it off because damn, that, that's a lot of money. But it doesn't, it doesn't change the fact you still need, yeah. And that's, I think Tracy's point is that we can do whatever, but all these things still need to be replaced, and your rates are still gonna go up. It's just gonna take longer for them to go up, and it will take longer to do the project.
Yeah, so I will say that I can put a list together of all the projects that I've talked about that you can delay and for how long that I, that I would recommend, doesn't mean that you have to take my recommendation. It's just, it's just my, my professional opinion of what, what I would recommend if you're gonna delay anything, these are the ones that I would recommend.
I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, and then people can come in here and see, okay, you know, here's a, here's a project that's delayed and it's a million dollars. Just know that, that project, and I can do a, a quick dirty estimate of, it's a million dollars today, cost of living increases over the next couple of years, and three years, if you wanna delay it, it's gonna be one point three million dollars three years from now, I'm just, I'm, I can do something quick and dirty like that. And then give people the option to say, do you want to just bite the bullet knowing that you're at where you're at, or do you want to try to delay some of these projects and go for more gradual increase over the, you know, maybe keep it at the seven or eight percent over the next so many years? You can, you can do that, but just, um, I can just present that at the next meeting, and they can, people can vote and see what they wanna do, we can have a hand vote system out here, or something online, yeah.
So, something, if there's gonna be an open house thing, something I think might be helpful to ask people, is if they realize by giving discounts to low income folks, that they are paying for that, that that is, they are subsidizing that. Because I know a lot of people would like to have that input, but they don't wanna have it forced upon them, because m- maybe that's not, maybe that's not how they would wanna help somebody, like they would wanna help in a different way. But I think people should have, have that information to know, that they're offsetting the cost, if, if we give discounts to seniors, everybody else, because I remember that conversation, and I was okay with it. If my bill's higher, so my neighbors, cause I live in a primarily older neighborhood, if my neighbors have a lower rate, I'm happy to pay it, but I know not everybody seems like I do. But I think people should have, they should know that that's, that comes with that, that their rates have to offset the discounts.
Motion to extend the meeting another fifteen minutes?
Thank you. Um, I'm, I'm trying to direct this conversation, I, I, cause I feel like we're, I think I know where we're heading with this, not that I'm trying to, because we do have some more business we need to take care of. Um, we will come back, we will, Ms. Coleman will reconvene, uh, figure out a plan and a schedule for an open house and what that presentation looks like, and then, um, go from there, if we can move on. But yes, we do have a motion for-
Somebody's gonna have to second it.
Yeah. You said fifteen minutes?
Yes.
I don't know how much we're, we're gonna have to go, or-
Cause we still have the, um-
We still have action items to take-
The budget.
Motion to extend the meeting another hour.
All right, um... You wanna deal for fifteen minutes? Is that fifteen minutes?
Can we do the whole budget in fifteen minutes?
No, I'm gonna-
Motion to, can we pass that motion first, sorry?
Yep, go ahead. Motion, motion on the floor by Mr. Smith, and seconded by Councilmember Burke to extend the meeting for fifteen minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, moving on to ten fifteen.
Motion to move budget workshop to next Monday.
Six or seven PM?
Seven PM.
But don't we have to have it approved?
No, it's a, it's a, it'll be another workshop, it's a workshop, so.
Okay.
Workshop, uh, uh, well, I have to have it approved by, we may be having some emergency meetings at the end of the year, I don't know. Has to be approved by the first.
Right, that's, that, yeah.
So, council does have the option to do a first and final reading? This is scheduled as for the first readings.
We could do the first reading and then make changes on the second reading, before the second reading?
Next Monday, yes.
Do we wanna-
So there's a motion on the floor by Councilmember Doughty right now.
Motion to move budget workshop to next Monday at seven PM.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Doughty, seconded by Councilmember Smith, uh, to move the budget workshop to December twelfth at seven PM, Councilmember Doughty.
Um, we need more time.
Councilmember Smith.
Um, I agree, we need more time, but I don't think you're gonna be in town for that meeting, right? So it would be, uh-
Which is fine, it's, it's in your guys' hands now.
Is Mr. Voice, Mr. Voice will be here though, right? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, moving on to action items, action item ordinance number one five two eight, adopting the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
First reading.
First reading, sorry, I did write that.
So this is our first reading, right?
Yes.
So we still are doing a second?
Yes.
So this will make it so we don't have to have another meeting? And we can make changes on our second?
Yes, well, at the workshop next week.
So, where am I at here, I'm just trying to read it right?
Okay.
I'm trying to, uh, motion to approve ordinance fifteen twenty-eight, adopting the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
First reading.
First reading. Second.
Moved by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Chapman, Councilmember Smith.
Um, we are still, uh, debating this budget, and we can make our changes on the, uh, next one that need to be done.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yeah, we're, we're moving the ball slowly forward, but this won't put us in a major crunch by just doing the first reading, so.
Further discussion?
Um, just a quick question, so if we do anything to decide to postpone any of the water projects, we can make amendments even after we do a second and final reading, is that correct?
Yeah, so, let's say city-
Council adopts the full budget and wants to make any changes to the budget, you can do a budget amendment after the fact, also.
Just wanted to leave that, thank you.
Anything further? Ms. Brintana?
Councilmember Burke? Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
Action item K, ordinance number one five two eight, passes four to one. Moving on to action item L, resolution number seven five six, adopting the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-seven Calhoun County Solid Waste Management Plan and Moderate Risk Hazardous Waste Management Plan.
Motion to approve resolution seven five six, adopting twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-seven Calhoun County Solid Waste Management Plan.
Moved by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Burke, Councilmember Smith.
Uh, looked like from the little bit I read in there, this was, uh, needed to be done by RCW.
Councilmember Burke? Further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Brintana, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
Motion passes, moving on to action item M, as in Mary, ordinance number one five two nine, and ordinance rescinding ordinance number one five zero eight, and ordinance one five two three, first reading.
Motion to accept ordinance fifteen twenty-nine, ordinance to rescind, ordinance fifteen oh eight, and ordinance fifteen twenty-three, first reading.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Doughty, seconded by Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Doughty.
Uh, it's something we need to do while we work with the county.
Councilmember Smith.
After our, uh, um, executive meeting, it, uh, needs to be done, which it's a misdemeanor crime for me to discuss what was going on in there.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I'm just hoping that this gets, uh, the county in our, sit down and talk with us and get things moving, cause that's what we need to be, get going and stuff, so, so... Yeah, feed, so, yeah, that's what, so, it looks like we got an attention, and hopefully it's going in the right direction.
Further discussion?
Oh, you know I could go, but I'm not gonna.
I was.
We only have eleven minutes left.
I wish, I wish I got a vote. Ms. Brintana, will you please, uh, take the roll on action item N, rescinding ordinance one five zero eight, and ordinance one five two three, first reading.
Councilmember Chapman?
Aye.
Councilmember Burke?
Aye.
Councilmember Doughty?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
I was really hoping for some solidarity on that one.
I was gonna, but majority.
I know. Motion passes. The time is now ten oh six, moving into workshop. Is that, is, there an action item at the end of this? Okay, it's just, okay, just, it looked like that way. Cardi Hill Surface Mining Overlay Request, Clark County Planning Commission, December fifteenth, agenda item. Mr. Goddard?
Okay, I promised to keep this under five minutes, so-
Oh wow, we went from ten, I said eight this morning, you're at five, go.
So this is a vicinity map, the site is shown in red, uh, next slide. This is an existing conditions map for the existing surface mining overlay, and click one more time, Pete, what you'll, what it'll show is, the forty-nine acres that they're looking to apply this to is immediately adjacent to an existing forty acre parcel that is not being used, plus there's fifty-four and a half acres just slightly to the east, plus there's thirty-two acres to the west. So in a total, there are two hundred and ten acres within about a mile and a half of the city of Woodland existing. That's before the fifty-nine acres that they're requesting in this case. Next slide. What this slide shows is the existing parcel that is surface mining overlay is actually on the far side of the ridge line that you look at, and the site that you're looking at is there to the left, but topographically, there's a ridge line that as you're in Woodland and you look across the river, that hillside. So it is right in the view of the city of Woodland, next slide, Pete? So this is the site that they are looking at doing the surface mine, next, next slide. So in relation to the rest of town, this gives you an idea, now what, I kinda characterize this in my head is, I think we should be calling this the Woodland Amphitheater Pit, because they are going to be excavating the site in such a shape that, uh, next slide,[1745.11] Because they are going to be excavating the site in such a shape that, uh, next slide, Pete. Um, or click a couple times. As the sound comes out of that pit, it will be dra- bouncing directly towards the city of Woodland. So depending on where they're excavating and where they're crushing, it's going to actually function at funneling that noise towards the city of Woodland. And um, on the city website, there is a webpage for this project that links to the county planning commission. There's also an attached ten-page comment letter from staff, which addresses the issue that we've raised. So the fact that it's barely fifteen hundred feet from the city limits, there's about fourteen hundred homes with about twenty-one hundred, at least twenty-one hundred residences, residents um, that are going to be affected by this. That's not to mention the fact that the sound waves, the view, um, will bounce back and forth across the um, the valley of the Lewis River. So there are going to be some significant impacts. Um, next slide, Pete. So the issues that are in the letter are proximity to the city, visibility, noise, traffic, the whole fact that all those trucks are going to be coming through exit twenty-one. They're going to have to be making multiple turning movements at exit twenty-one. Um, is going to affect exit twenty-one and the county um, seems to accept the fact that um, they, there will be no additional mitigation required. And part of that is because the applicant is arguing that this is a non-project EIS or a non-project CIPA checklist, basically arguing that the impacts will be discussed if they do a pit. And this is kind of like, you know, if my daughter and her, or my daughter was married, if she and her husband decided to have a baby, there's no mystery as to whether or not there's going to be a baby coming. If you decide you're going to get pregnant, it's inevitable that it's coming. So it's not like this is a mixed-use commercial development site or a transit-oriented overlay where you never know what you're going to get because the building could have multiple uses in it. They are asking for a surface mining overlay. There is no outcome from this proposal that is not a surface mine. So for them to argue that, oh, we haven't decided what we're doing with the property. They have a nineteen ninety-nine ge- geological study of the site. They've owned this property since twenty, uh, two thousand. So it's pretty clear that the mining company that owns this property, their intention is to do a mine. So it's going to be pretty hard for us to not argue that they've done inadequate environmental review.
Questions for Mr. Goddard and Mr. Smith?
How long is this project that would go for?
So if I remember correctly, I think they were talking about forty-nine million cubic yards of material. So I mean, depending on how quickly the site is depleted, I mean, it could be ten years of hard work. Or it could be fifty years of a slow pick, 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 depending on how quickly they work. It is.
If, if, if I remember correctly, the, the, a gentleman that I actually know owned the other one, the other, the one on that side. Um, when you go across the river, not Cardi Hill this way, but the other direction.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So they owned one back in the day and the reason they sold it is because they spent all their time gridlocked at our intersection. His words, that they, that, that they would spend fifteen minutes just trying to make the turn to sit to get on the freeway. And so that wasn't beneficial to them and now.
How long ago was that?
Gosh, I'm gonna say, gosh, twenty-ish.
We haven't grown at all since then.
And that was, and that's, that's the thing. He's from Ridge
Yeah, gridlocked then?
He, he, he lives in Ridgefield, so he's well aware of like, how much we've grown since then. And I, I was going to talk to him before this meeting. I ran out of time today just to refresh my memory. But I remember him specifically saying that that's, they just wasted money and fuel trying to get through the intersection. So I don't know why this entity thinks that they would magically be able to get through our intersection any faster than any one of us.
All, all one hundred trucks. I'm, I'm boosting the number, but what is it, eighty-eight?
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six?
Eighty-six.
That's a day.
A day. But my, my follow-up question to Mr. Goddard and during our meeting was, um, is that just five days a week and it's unknown? It could be seven days a week.
It could be. And in the summer, imagine that in the summer when none of us can go anywhere anyway. Like, I just, I think it's so late anyway.
Okay, Mr. Goddard, I thought we had to transcend our last two because we're trying to be proactive and extending ourselves. And then Calhoun County says, well, you got a transportation problem you got to deal with, so worry about that first. And then we get this shoved down our throat?
From a different county.
From a different county. But we don't, but we got to take up care, care of our transportation problem first. So that's why they're slapping our hands about expanding down the, in the bottom to the stuff. I gotta love government.
Just love yourself.
So the last, so the last one got mixed. What are the chances of this one getting mixed?
That would depend. So the, there's a hearing for the planning commission on the fifteenth. And then their recommendation would go to the county commissioners at some point. So at this point, um, I think our discussion with the mayor this morning was, this letter is from me to the planning commission, stating our position. And then depending on what the recommendation that goes to the county commissioners, then I think that would be the time for you to weigh in with the resolution as to the s- the city's position when they're actually going to make the decision. Um, because that would be from elected official to elected official as opposed to planning, uh, from staff to the planning commission at this point.
But could the public, could Woodlanders participate in that meeting on the fifteenth?
Yes. So on the city's webpage, there is a discussion. There was a workshop which, where they don't take publish, public input. That was December first. And the public hearing where they take public input is December fifteenth.
So that's what we, so theoretically, many voices might make a difference. So if folks in Woodland don't want to hear blasting for the next ten years.
Rally the troops.
There we go.
December fifteenth.
Go to the planning commission. Fifteen minutes up.
Motion to end meeting?
Moved by Councilmember Doughty, seconded by Councilmember Burke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The time is ten sixteen. Thank you, everybody. Yes, sir.